Lori Briskie.
Here.
Helen Grassi.
Here.
Scott Fischel.
Here.
Tom Hax.
Here.
Jennifer.
Here. Stand for the class.
To the life of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation on the ground, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
On behalf of the board, I would like to welcome all students, staff, parents, and interested community members to tonight's Board of Education meeting. I would like to remind everyone that this is a meeting of the Board of Education held in public for the purpose of conducting the schools' district's business. It is not to be considered a public community meeting. There is time for public comment during the meeting in the public participation section of the agenda. Make a motion to approve the minutes for February 23rd, 2023, February 37th, 2023, March 2nd, 2023, March 3rd, 2023, and March 16th, 2023. I second. Thank you. Any discussion? All right, Ms. Placko.
Lori Briskie.
Aye.
Helen Grassi.
Aye.
Scott Fischel.
Aye.
Tom Hax.
Aye.
Jennifer.
Aye. Motion carried. And that brings us to special reports.
We've asked all trustee, Paintville Township trustee, which committee, to address the board about some of the, to give us an update on the land behind the review of the Sidley property. It's our understanding through discussions with the township that there may be a developing going in there in the future. And I thought having him come at this point would be a good thing to have him give us what he knows. So you come up.
Thank you. So he's got to pull up the map. I want to caveat here that this is preliminary development agreement, right? So what we see here is no way necessarily final of what's going to happen, but it's outline of kind of setting the limits of what would be potentially in this plot of land. It's roughly just under 400 acres. I'm sure you're all familiar with the old airport by case of where the golf course used to be. So the, the map we have up here, it's kind of outlined in yellow. You can see it's colorized. The only portion that's not is the portion to the left, which kind of shaped this way. So this will be a two-part type of development, residential, mixed use. And then we'll have over in this part will be a town center concept. Unlike anything really in northeast Ohio, we'll probably look at putting some sort of possibly moving the township administration there, fire station, amphitheater, recreation, those type of things. The amphitheater overlooking the old golf course down by the river. So it'll be a nice scenic view underneath there. The casement house will remain. That's where everybody involved is adamant about that staying there, the old casement house. So that will maintain that, the vision for that and possibly breakfast or something to that effect. On the main corridor of casement avenue, our casement will be the mixed type of use. So smaller boutique stores, bottoms will be this commercial, up top will be some sort of apartment or condominium residence. So first thing I want to clarify, I know in the email, the numbers have been all over the place, right? Two thousand, nineteen hundred, et cetera. So the way the number was calculated, they added a number in there that kind of balloons into a number that's really not realistic as far as residential goes, okay? Because if that started at two thousand and something, got down to nineteen seventy-five, but further looking at six of approximately 618 of that will be senior type of living, assisted living, nursing care, final stage living, those types of residence. So you pull that really 618 out there because they aren't families, they aren't people with children or a possibility, you know, that kind of thing. It's just nursing care. So it's really commercial versus residential. So that takes the number down substantially when you pull that 600 out there. So then within that 600, or once we pull that out, there'll have to be some apartments, which will be, you can see the dark pods. The light ones are single-family homes, meaning because they're light and space-wise. The denser is where you'll have townhomes and some apartments. The apartments will be one- and two-bedroom apartments. It'll be a mix of 415 of those total. The rent, we are in the agreement, we are setting a minimum rent to ensure the type of residence there is a higher class of living as income goes, probably more geared towards, the idea is higher-income, single people or married couples with no children is the target market for those apartments. Then we'll have some townhomes that'll obviously have some families in them. Preliminary numbers, I talked to Jim when we looked at Cobblestone, just to see, they have 600-plus apartments. And I know some of the concern of this is the elementary school, right? So we did a preliminary, you got me some preliminary numbers based on transportation. I think out of those 618 apartments, you have 19 kids total coming to your elementary school out of all of those apartments. So even at a smaller scale, we don't have three-bedroom apartments. This, I say we, the developer won't have three-bedroom apartments like Cobblestone does. So I think that number might actually be much smaller. And then the rest will be single-family homes, but another part of that is some of those will be retirement-living type of communities. So these will be smaller ranches geared at empty nesters, 55 and above. They're possibly looking at a community that'll be strictly 55 and above. So those will be smaller, probably no children. So while we have, you know, while we have a number of 1,700 residences, when you take out the senior 55-and-over community, the apartments, you're really looking at single-family homes and townhomes, just about 1,300 is what you have total there. The sheet I gave you, which isn't on that, is we're making the builder include, the developers include, two of those three red lines, which you'll see is going to connect to the existing path you have on the outside of the elementary school. So there's a dotted line that comes down, yes, right there. When they start, before they can break, before they start the pods E and G, which are the bottom two down there, they're going to have to break the ground to create, is this pointer right here? The red, yeah, this here. So this goes through the current Sidley property. You probably see their compound you see from Madison Avenue. So that road will come through there. So they're either going to connect one of the paths there and one through here, or two through this neighborhood, hoping that the children that live in the area will utilize that bike walking and such to help cut down on transportation through the district. And I know the important part is, is the money. So we did a preliminary, we had the county do a preliminary count for us and some figuring. Roughly all in, this will produce, once it's completed, and you know, there might be some tips, those type of things. But once it's all set and done in full collection, roughly about $4.7 million for the district out of this, this community, once it's all said and done. So that's where the dollars would be. Timeline on this district, or on this development, they're looking anywhere from 10 to 15 years before they start, or before they finish. Order of completion is they're going to start up in here with some of the denser apartments, senior living. So the income-generating type of business with that, some of the townhomes, the 55-and-over community. So really, the impact on our district, school-wise, is going to be the last phase of this. So you're talking five-plus years before any really, the bulk of those residential homes get started. And that's, you know, we all know, who knows where the market will be? Who knows what the economy will be like? Will this bottom section even ever get finished? The developer hopes so, but time will tell. But that, these ones down here, where we're going to have, I, we feel, would have the biggest impact because of the single-family larger homes, will be the last ones to be completed.
So with regard to the 55-and-over community, is it, is it organized? Okay, so there, there's a community, there's HMO and...
All, all, this whole thing will be HOA. Yeah, it'll be different. Each pod will likely have a, there'll probably be a master HOA out, I don't know for sure that's on the development, but there'll maybe be some sort of master HOA. And then the 55-and-over community likely will have their own because of being specific, you know, specific to that age group. And then the condominiums, or the townhomes rather, will likely have some sort of their own HOA involved there. And then as far as recreation goes, then you see these large green spaces. They're required to carry those parks with inside. There'll be walking paths, white paths throughout the community, sidewalks on every street. So it will be a very trendy, you know, travelable, so to speak.
District friendly.
Yes, district friendly. Can walk to school, ride bikes around. This road here is the main road. This is a no-low road, which means there's no house driveways on this road. So this will be strictly a pass-through road. So all the houses will be in subroads on the sides. This will be strictly to get through the community and off into the different pods. Connection-wise, there'll be a connection to Casement, obviously on the big one here. There'll be a connection in Foxfire, which was designed, sorry, Foxfire is down here, a temporary cul-de-sac. When that was built, it was built as a temporary cul-de-sac 40 years ago or whenever that was developed. So that will finally be connected. And then last piece of the puzzle will be Bellmore, which is designed as a temporary cul-de-sac as well. That will be connected. But the traffic load, you know, they'll have to do a full traffic study when it's done. But based on the way that they designed this, it was designed to really, the only people coming up this road are people who live here. And the only people coming down Foxfire are the people who live here. Because this is going to be the quickest access in and out, and then branching off to the different parts of the development.
Yeah, I've got a little question. When we were planning, the facility plan back in 2014 and 15, I had the pleasure of meeting with Mr. Sidley because we wanted to buy three acres of property directly behind the old Madison Avenue property, which we did. And I noticed it changed a little bit because he did show me what, he was projecting, what the type of development it was going to be. But the discussion went to sewers. You know, right now, we don't have sewers.
Correct.
Even though it's a pretty established neighborhood, I was surprised to find that there wasn't until we started talking about.
Nowhere around here.
Are they going to put sewers in?
Yeah, so the county right now has the treatment plan. If you go to, if you're coming up Riverside Drive, Wintergreen Hill, if you can go right over the edge of Wintergreen Hill, there's a treatment plan down there. Problem is EPA won't allow them to expand that because that is a direct spill off into the natural waterway. So it's at its capacity. They clean the water and then they'll outlet it into the Grand River. So the EPA will not allow them to expand. So in 2005, I believe, when the initial plan was agreed upon for this property back in '05, they had made a deal with Paintville City to, Paintville City will increase their substation capabilities. And then they, Paintville City's sewer wastewater will service this entire area. So it will be brought up into here. Then the possibility of anybody else tying into it, that will be, I know there was some discussion with the school, maybe eventually tying into that. I think that is on the table, but that's between the city and when they plan. But I believe that that is part of what the intent is, because that'll serve this whole area here with the new substation early expansion that they'll have to help facilitate all of that. So, you know, I think the original one in '05 had 1,400-plus single-family homes. So when you dial back the assisted living, the nursing care, et cetera, the apartments, and then you got to, so if you just put in the townhomes and the single-family homes, falls below the 1,400. And the developer believes that they're going to lose additional lots because once they do their way stormwater study, there's going to have to be some retention basins. They just don't know where they're at. Yes, that's why they're not on the image. But they feel to accommodate those, they're still going to lose some more lots on top of that. They've already lost 75. They think they're going to lose more to accommodate that weight stormwater. So that number will drop again, once they, likely, once they develop the stormwater plan through, through they come.
How many did you use?
I think it's like 387 total. So you have this portion down here, which is the old Casement Golf Course, which the line is the Paintville City. So that's going to maintain green space park. They're going to include, I believe, 17 acres on the hill of green space as well. That will be included with maintaining that green space. Then when you put in the town center here, which will be, like I said, in our plan or hope, is to have some sort of amphitheater, playground maybe, and I don't want to say this, but splash pad perhaps, township hall. Because the one thing we've always felt township lacked is a center town, right? Paintville City has their square, Concord has their, you know, their little, up by their township hall. So we don't, the way Paintville Township shaped that portion, we've always lacked that like central town area. So we believe this will give us that community type of central community that we've always been lacking in Paintville Township with the town center. Yeah, based on talking to the different developers that are involved and different entities, that this will be one of the largest, most complex developments in northeast Ohio in the last 30 years, based on the mixed use, the commercial, the town center, et cetera. This is going to be essentially one of a kind in northeast Ohio. So, we'll, we're still working with, we know how important this is to, you know, I grew up on Hawk Ridge, which is right over here. My grandma lives on Dolphin, my aunt lives on Hemlock. You know, so we're all, this is important to us to make, Josh lives on Bellmore, you know, so this is important to make sure we get it right. So for lack of better words, we're really beating up the developers to get everything that we would like to see them do in this community. We learn as we have different developments, Calley Farms, Fairway Meadows. We're learning as we go, the things, as simple as the interior garages have to be finished. If you go in some of these neighborhoods where they put up houses, you'll notice they're just mud and taped. We're going to require the inside of the garages are prime painted so that you don't drive down the road and see taped and muddied garages. Overhangs on the house so it's not just cut off at the, at the edge of the roof, you know, all these things for aesthetics. People concern that a developer, you know, let's say Ryan Homes could come in and do some of the homes. We're making it so you can't have more than, it's the same house color, more than, at least you have to have three houses in between the same type of make. So we want to make sure that this isn't a cookie cutter, you know, we've heard this term, cookie cutter. National Builder does the whole thing. We've involved two local builders, Proville Homes and Loretto Building, and they're working with other builders like Jem, Dawson Homes. So we're also writing in there that at least, hopefully it'll be, you know, if we get this going, that at least 25% or more of the development will be, of the single-family homes and townhomes will be completed by local builders, to ensure that there's some variety and that we get some of their local field into the, to the development. Any questions?
Paintville City, what they're going to do is going to be incremental as the development grows.
The city, you mean? For the sewer? Yeah, well, it's really one of those things that I believe they have to build, expand a substation. So the capacity essentially, I think, will initially has to be created from the get-go.
Well, build capacity and then extend.
Extend lines as they go, right. Yeah, that's why they're starting here and then they'll come out and then this will be the last phase over here. So they'll build the capacity to start, and then it'll, it'll start as they do the roads and the infrastructure, it'll start.
Did you guys look at Stone Water Aberdeen at all when you looked at the, the drive-through road?
No.
No, you just did it, Rob.
Oh, okay.
I just wondered.
Yeah, so this will be, you know, this will be a wide road with walking paths, bike paths along the side. And like I said, no homes will have frontage on that. And any townhomes that are facing that, we're putting in the agreement that the front of the town home will face the road and the garage would be in the back. So that you won't see the back of some, just a flat back of a townhouse on the main road. So it adds to the aesthetics of the development.
Can I ask you, when they did the town estimates, is that, is that like considering a household 920, like what you would get out of that at full capacity? Is that what they, is that what they estimate?
Yes, we had, the orders took into account all the homes based on the current taxable values and the current taxation rates. That's what it would produce if it was all there today, you know. So I don't know necessarily on the house, I have to check.
Right, because we, we don't get all of that tax value. It kind of just redistributed amongst everybody else. At the end of the day, we don't really collect any more money.
So what we, what we asked for is what new revenue will be generated to us as an entity and you as an entity. And for us, it was 2.6, I think, and the school is about 4.7, actual income.
So, so then, I mean, just to, the, the inside millage we definitely didn't get, but you're, you're right about the, the beyond inside millage.
And then the other thing I had a question or concern about was all the, all those dollars that would come in would be able to be used for operating, you know, operating, it's operational dollars. It doesn't address facility needs. We're already like talking about facilities. And I think that was my biggest concern when we're talking about a development that's this large. We have five communities that have to pay for facility to serve essentially a development that's going in at a different community. And I don't know that if people are aware of that in other communities, right? That if we're going to go back and ask them for dollars to build facility, I don't know if the developer did any studies about what their demographics will look like once it's full. If there's anything out there that can be done, I just, I'm just concerned about facility. And that, those tax dollars don't, don't come with that.
Yeah, and, you know, we had, based on the discussion we had, is that when you guys did your facility plan, because there wasn't an agree upon development here in '05 that would have produced 1,400-plus single-family homes, and that was sort of taken into account when you guys came up with your plan previously, that's at least the information that was conveyed to the township choir, that there was some estimate that, based on the fact that that development was agreed upon in '05, that there was going to be some development here and it was kind of taken into consideration. Now, the developer, I don't think that they necessarily have done a study, but like I said, you know, a bulk of the, you have 600 of the units that were in the 1900 are nursing and, you know, senior care as far as that goes, assisted living, those type of things. The 55-and-over, the apartments for the empty nesters or the younger married couples or young, single people in the one- and two-bedroom apartments. So really, we're looking at, when we look at the bulk of what we think would impact, the school is, falls almost below what the '05 development agreement had of the 1,400-plus homes, because we're really like 1,375. And we, like I said, the development, developer feels that they'll lose even more once it, what, that stormwater gets figured out.
Yeah, I don't know. I always just do math, right? Like if it's going to be 1,200 homes, if you, if you just do some general ideas, right? One of those homes might have one child, even if they had one child, that's, that's 300 to 400 students that would be an influx to our district. How do we support those students? And at the end of the day, like, I'm hoping that we can collaborate, like as, as you move forward with this, we can't stop development, I get it, and development is a good thing. It's, it's, you know, it's going to happen regardless. We don't have a seat at that table. But I'm just hoping that we can collaborate because at the end of the day, that's a lot of students. And if we can't service those students, how are you going to sell your homes? Right? Like, I mean, it's, it's a joint process and I'm just.
Oh, and I agree. And, you know, the thing is, is that, as I mentioned, the timeline of things, 10 to 15 years. So hopefully in that time, you know, as we have to develop our, our own challenges here, we understand that you guys have your own challenges, one community's develop, you know, Concord, not to the scale, but they had, they're adding homes and continue to add homes. So I know that's a challenge as well. So hopefully in the next 10 to 15 years, once this gets approved again, then, you know, the district knows it's coming, right? Down to the, for the next 10 years. So there can be some planned figure based on that. And like I said, the bulk of the impact on the schooling will be the last phase of this development. So we don't see any of this really, especially in here, at least five-plus years down the line, before they're even starting construction, let alone occupied by families, right? So that gives, sometime I would think, once this gets going to hopefully, and I know the next phase would essentially help solve some of that if, I don't know, since the last one didn't go, what the next one looks like. But I know the last one essentially would help with the changing of schools and the building, et cetera, would help sh, you know, shuffle some of the students around.
I just think knowing this information is helpful as we discuss the next phase and whatever. And quite honestly, just from my own personal perspective, I'm just hoping that it would lead to further conversations with all the rest of the townships as well. Like, like we really have to be a partner with, with our townships when we, when they're considering development.
Yeah, and once, you know, once this preliminary, so just to give you a little more information, the preliminary agreement is just saying you cannot do more than X amount of units. We've also wrote into the agreement that they can't, let's say they only, let's say they lose 10 lots here, right, for stormwater, they can't shift those 10 lots to no pot. So what they're at is their maximum, and each pot is set at where it's at. So they can't move some, if they fall short here, add 20 more into here. So that's the cap. And then they'll probably lose more once the stormwater comes. And if they lose some for whatever reason, they can't create and put them somewhere else because of where the spacing is. So we feel that that number is their highest shooting point, but when it's all said and done, that number is going to reduce even further down. And like I said, who knows five years from now where they'll be, what'll be the market, you know, it may change and they may be building million-dollar homes over here, who knows? But each phase as well, they have to come to the township board for approval. So we'll know as they go to develop a phase, they'll come to us for approval on what they're doing, what's going in there. So this is a preliminary agreement, we're setting the base minimum. And then as each pod gets developed, they'll come back to the township to have approval done for that as well. So we'll know as each pod goes, better idea exactly what's going in there and when it's happening. So it's not going to be this just mass building. We'll know that potties going in, they're going to build, here's our final developments, and we'll know there's eight units going in there, what types going in there, who their target market is. All of that will be known before they start construction and we can share that information with you guys.
Does Sidley family still, are they going to maintain ownership of the property or they already sold?
They own it right now, yeah.
And are they going to own it for the duration until the actual development?
Yeah, I don't know the business side of it. I don't know how they're going to sell it off, but I know that they're maintaining, you know, they're going, sorry, didn't you? They're going to, they're going to maintain, you know, we refer to it as Sidley pound-pound, but you know, it's, they're a huge lot, they're going to maintain that. They're building another house in the future for another one of their families along Madison Avenue. So we felt that this was very important to get this road put in. And that was, Mr. Sidley was finally on board and then he passed. And then we had to start that all over again to get it, to get the family to agree again in some way. But they've been great working with us. They want to have this development here because of, you know, aside from, you know, that it's going to be an impact on schools, but overall, it'll be a great thing for the community. And they want this to be a lasting legacy for the elder members of their family that really have helped build so much of our, this area.
They're not giving the developers themselves. They will sell.
Proville Homes of George Davis and Loretto Life Lees through Loretto Building will be the two main guys that have been heading up the development. And then...
And I'm totally unfamiliar with them.
Yeah, well, I've seen their signs, they know offices all over.
Okay, they're, they're local developers.
Yeah. And Sidley's, my understanding is that they did extensive interviews with multiple developers before they chose these two gentlemen to head up. So it wasn't just these guys off the street. They interviewed multiple developers. So these guys would head up the overall development. And then each pod, from what I'm told from George Davis, Proville Homes, essentially each pod then will be bid out to developers and then they'll oversee that development as well. So Jem Construction, let's say, might get X amount of homes in this pot. Or, you know, Dawson Homes might get X amount in this pot. The nice part about doing it this way is we're eliminating the possibility, and there's nothing wrong with Ryan Homes, they've got a great pot, people love them. But it eliminates just coming in, because if they went R1, they could just come on, throw in 1,400 houses, we have no say over what happens. We would have no real control over what they put in there. So this gives us a way to work with the developer to make sure it works for the community and as much as possible for the district. So we feel this gives us, the township the best stake in this than the alternative, which is essentially what was planned in '05, where you just come through 1,400 houses up and that was, that was the end, you know. So this gives us a lot, a lot more input on what happens for our community.
Do you know if they included all that information when they did popular demographics studies and...
I don't think they did.
I don't, I don't recall that being part.
I don't think this was.
Not this, but the old, the old one I thought was.
It was, it was, it was housing starts, I think. You looked at this whole, how was this?
But that, from what our understanding is that the district was aware of that '05 development. And that was kind of along the way had always, had been thought that it was at some point going to be developed with at least that many homes. That I can't speak to, that's just a little weird.
And that number was 1,400.
About 1,400, yeah. So like I said, once you take the apartments out and this senior assisted living and such, we're really right about that number as far as single-family and townhomes go.
The original plan had small cul-de-sacs.
Yes.
Running up rate behind the property.
Yep, that's, the original plan was cul-de-sac, more cul-de-sac living of the single-family. Because of this R1 type of construction, rather, this is a, you know, PUD planned unit development. So, which gives us obviously more control too, and it's what's better for our community versus just, like I said, they've done buying a ton of 1,400 homes. Then you have that cookie cutter situation, which we want to avoid. We want this to be something that's attractive to, especially in these pods down here, affluent homeowners. You're talking at this stage, four, five, 600,000-dollar homes is the goal over in this, this area over here. So.
Those studies, they take into, right, they take into account housing starts, current housing starts and estimated housing starts. But we've always, I think we've always had that conversation, don't take into account, like, the developments that could be on the horizon. Oh, there's that big property, right, by Fairway Pines.
Yeah, yeah.
I remember when we used to talk about that. They, they don't really take that into account.
They've been over the acreage. They've been over the actress.
Obviously, that's something.
Maybe we have, what, five done or six done, they've all been completely different results. Each time in the reality of including another, you know.
Yeah, I mean, it's obviously, you can't deny this will have an impact on the district, but we feel that the way that this is gonna get developed will be a, it'll stretch it out to hopefully give time to, you know, to plan and try to accommodate it in coming in and make adjustments as far as that goes. And that's why these pods being the last to go, which will have the greatest impact, at least gives more time to push it out before they come in.
When is the final vote on approving?
Uh, well, you know, we had a public hearing, so we had, public came and spoke, we closed the public portion of it, and we continued hearing from last meeting to the meeting we just had, but we're still working on that development agreement, putting in all of the things that we're asking. I mean, we're really beating it up, for lack of better words, to just get everything in there that we want to see for our community in here. So next step is for us to meet with them and just finally go over the last bits of all the things we're putting, just to give you an idea of the things that we're doing from top to the radges, moving the sidewalks a little bit back along, making the driveways to make sure that we have two cars parked, they're not parking over the sidewalk. These are all things we're taking into account that we've seen in other developments that we want to try to avoid in this development. So these are just the small things on top of all the regular stuff that we're trying to get implemented into the agreement to ensure that all those mistakes that we see everywhere else aren't happening here, you know.
So April, May?
You know, we're gonna meet with them hopefully in early April, we have two meetings, so I would hope.
I guess.
But by our second meeting, so the third week in April, we'll have it all hashed out, be able to approve again the preliminary agreement, which doesn't give them, you know, the misconception is we vote yes and then they just come and start building, right? It's a preliminary, it's just like, yes, we approved an idea, now this works for each pot, each time you come to us for approval, and that's kind of how P U Bs work. So this is just essentially the grand plan, and then we're gonna beat it up again each pot and make sure we're doing what's best for our community.
Can you mention there could be some tests of volunteer at that point, we'd have to.
Come to you guys anyways, right? So you'll be brought to the table, of course, on that, so we'll talk about that once the time comes. But you know, we hope that that'll be there, some of that money will come back to help build some of the community things as well as to help provide some of the access for, you know, possibly more fire department, more services, those type of things, and the town center as well for recreation and public use. Yeah, it's a, that's a touch of subject, something I did, something else, so it's one of the concepts, ideas, but our main concept is a town center with a amphitheater and some of the other things. And possibly a very big thing that happened with a fitness facility there as well, community based, so if that happens, it'd be really.
Sorry, wetlands?
You know, the wetlands, this over here, we have repeated setbacks because this is, you have the Red Creek is over in this area here, so some of this, that's why this drawing is very preliminary. This, some of this is even gonna have to get pushed back and moved. Some other things that we did, you see these big blocks, they're almost like train cars, right? Those are the condominium and apartment pods. What we did is we, we cut all of this out, so these big things here, we told them, no, you can't put more than six in a group. So these ten plus townhomes in a row, that's all gone, took that out, we said we don't want that. Six is the maximum, so they gave us, they didn't redo the whole drawing, but we have a new preliminary drawing that shows them, you know, two, four, and a couple of sixes. So it cuts down the number as well because they can't put as many in there, so. As we go, we think that number will be reduced as well. Any else, any questions?
Thank you for coming.
No problem.
No problem.
Thanks, Gary.
No problem.
And if you guys need any information, we can provide it. What we're doing too on our website, anybody that's interested in for the, on our website page, T W P dot com, on our homepage, under the notices, there is a tab you click that as we get more updated information on this development for the public, it will be put on the website so you can just click there and see the most up to date information regarding the development as you go along. Because we want the public as notified and as involved as possible with this, so it's not a surprise and everybody knows what's happening along the way. If anybody wants to along the way, they can follow there.
Not in here, just a fifteen second plug for what we're trying to do maybe in May.
Oh yeah, so I talked to Jim, you know, as we all here with the kids, especially, I have kids now, my son's twelve, going on thirteen, my daughter's eleven, the drugs, fentanyl and those type of things are a real big problem, and one of the big issues now, coming to find out, is on Snapchat and TikTok, especially Snapchat with those quick, non, you know, the disappearing type of images, they put menus up and the kids can screenshot them and then they can order and have it delivered. And so, you know, I just saw a story that prompted us is a young child, a young kid, thirteen or fourteen, ordered fentanyl, died from an overdose, they're making it look like candy, Skittles, Sweet Tarts, you know, literally looking with the print on them. So what we're gonna do is talk to the sheriff, maybe get Lake County Narcotics involved, and in May, we're gonna put on some sort of parent event, come in and present to say, here, here's what's going on with the kids you might not know, here's what to look out for, here's what your kids are seeing that you might not know they're seeing or that they're encountering or could encounter at a party, you know, candy's out, it might not be candy. So to tell them, be careful what they're taking from people, it might not be what they think it is, and even prescription pills, we're finding out, you know, the sheriff's office is telling us that you hear on the news, it look like prescriptions, but it's full of fentanyl and it's killing people so they think they're taking one thing. So what we wanted to do is kind of bring this in, invite the parents in here at the district, especially with summer coming, to kind of inform them and let them know what to look out for and what their kids are encountering.
Kind of, we're looking at twenty-three or twenty-four.
Yeah, so I'm working with Fobbie from the sheriff's office, and he's gonna arrange by the Lake County Narcotics Agency, bringing some, you know, hopefully some images and such that they've been encountering and they can talk about the things they're encountering, so.
Doing it here?
Yeah. And so as we get more, we'll come up with it, but just felt was important is this gets a bigger issue with our kids that parents, a lot of parents don't know, so I think to word out to them what their kids are seeing on social media and stuff too, this could be beneficial, so. If we get more, I'll let Jim know and then we'll go from there.
Thank you. All right, that brings us to old business, I knew we do have a few topics. I think the first one on there was our handbook. You wanna come up with one?
Sure, so we have some, have worked hard to prepare a board handbook for us to sort of follow and gives guidelines on what the board's goals and things that we're supposed to be doing. And I just wanted to make sure that we are all still on the same page as some of the things that are in this board handbook, that I think some of the things that go on at the table here kind of contradict what we have agreed to and how we've agreed to function as a board and our governance, board governance. I have some concern about that, we've all agreed to this, we've all voted on it, we took some time to prepare this as a district attorney got involved, every administrator's got involved, and then sometimes it's not how we operate. And so I just want to make sure that we are all on the same page about continuing to follow this board handbook.
So I think there's a couple of specific areas that we've agreed to that I think also need updated. The policy committee gonna update the handbook, I think, Mrs. Harden, is that, do you think it falls under the policy committee or?
I would say it falls under policy.
You guys are the ones who originally.
We did.
And so there's a few updates that just need to be made in there, the one agreement we did make is especially around this topic of old and new business, to be transparent, that we would communicate with the rest of the board when we have a topic to bring to the table. I just wanna make sure that everybody still agrees with that. Chris, will you agree with that?
Yeah, as much as possible, you know, something comes up at the last minute, it would be possible to give forty-eight hours notice, but generally, yes.
One of the things that I had concern about was that once the board has voted and acted on something is that we don't try and rehash those things, that was something that we have in the board handbook. The other thing that I was concerned about was the board agendas that we had agreed to provide our board president and the superintendent with some things that if we wanted to see something on the board agenda, that we would do that in advance, and once the, if I'm not mistaken here, what I'm reading is once we have that agenda published, that we not make changes. One of the things that I don't think we do that is actually in this policy handbook is we still don't have a motion on the board agenda to accept the agenda at the beginning of the meeting, and as I was reading that, that was one of the things that I highlighted, because that helps us as we do that, we can move on to the next rules that are in this, in this guidebook that we have created and how we handle changes to the board agenda, and so I wanna make sure that we revisit that. I can provide you with my notes on that, but, so I don't think, we have not added an adoption of the agenda to our agenda, but that's listed in here. And that I sometimes feel that there are times when individuals bring things to, I don't know, the board president, or we want to add something at the last minute, and I have no idea what the, I don't know what the purpose is behind that, but I would hope that we're not trying to circumvent, you know, asking the board president to put something on the agenda. So like I don't want to circumvent the issues and just trying to amend the agenda at the table all the time, just to circumvent putting it on the agenda in the first place. I think that's why we have these rules, so that we can have conversations and say, hey, we haven't even had, we haven't even brought that up in new business yet, how can we put something on the agenda to vote on something? Maybe that's better, like let's talk about it first and then put it on the agenda following. So that was just one of my concerns.
One of the things to consider, my understanding is we do a approval of the agenda at the beginning of the meeting, it requires a two-thirds vote to amend that, so essentially it requires a four-fifths vote to amend that once we approve it, that'd go that direction. I know it's in the handbook that we were approved the agenda, I think that's just something that needs to be thought through.
Right, and Gary, I don't know if this would be a good time to pass these out?
Sure.
So OSBA has put out some things and I actually did go, it was a couple of weeks ago where they put out some information on parliamentary procedure and board voting. I asked them to print those because I thought they were really, really helpful. It tells you what things that, how you make motions, who has to pass the motions, when you recess, who has to vote, when you have to vote, and then the last one out of this one was voting makes a difference is it actually tells you how many, how many members of the board need to vote on certain topics, because there are some instances where it's a simple majority of those present, sometimes it's a super majority of the people who are on the board. So I just thought it was interesting, it's good, it's good reading and reference material for us to have, and if we want to actually physically incorporate this into our board handbook, maybe it wouldn't be a bad idea.
So Mrs. Ross, I heard you say a couple of things, I guess I just wanna make sure the board's all on the same page, so when the policy committee takes it away and reviews, they know where we're at. So can you go over your list of a couple of the topics that you've read in the book?
Yeah. Thank you. Again, on page fifteen where we have the information on meeting agendas, individual board members who wish to add items to the meeting agenda should provide detail and a request to the board president or directly to the superintendent. Other board members may and should also be consulted about whether such items request, such item requests merit addition. During the meeting itself, discussion should be contained and limited to the agenda items once motions have been made and seconded. The conversation and discussion unrelated to the agenda approved at the beginning of the meeting is not recommended, and I guess that's where I'm saying that we don't have an agenda item to approve the agenda, right? And so that, that kind of becomes moot, and I would like it not to be.
So we've discussed that in the past, and I think we said that we did not want to approve the agenda at the beginning, so I guess that would be where we need to have some discussion to make sure if that is something we wanna move to.
And then the next thing, again, right on the same page, right underneath that, amendments may be made to the agenda prior to the adoption during a meeting, but a majority vote adopts the agenda and after it's adopted, only a two-thirds vote, right? That's where the two-thirds vote, it's actually listed in here, we approved it, so if that's not what we intend to do, I think we should address it. But I think we should also address why wouldn't we do that, right? Like we're trying to put these protocols in place so that we have meetings that make sense and that are being changed at the last minute.
So real quick, before we move on, that's not a daunting, or approving the agenda? You want?
You're wanting to approve today's agenda?
No, I'm telling you, it's actually in, it's in our board policy handbook. If we're not going to follow that as a procedure, then we should take it out, right? We've approved this, right? Like we've approved this, so we should be looking at those kinds of things to either clean up and clarify what it is that our intention is, and what the purpose is behind those intentions.
I think our first step needs to be then is really to have a policy meeting and go through the policies again and see what we are and are not following, and bring those to the board for clarification on what, how we see it moving forward.
All right, and I think we had discussed that two or three meetings ago, the policy committee was gonna look at that, and I think we're still just awaiting that.
Tomorrow's our meeting with policy, so.
Your new meeting, I got you.
Good stuff.
Good.
Wait, Tom and I will wait to hear him here.
Yeah.
Is there anything else? Can you send, can you send the items?
And then, I guess on page seventeen, we talk about respecting the will of the majority and some, some important aspects on how to be good board members and once a motion has been made and seconded and any discussion requested and considered, you know, we take the role, once that's done, the board has made a vote, that's a board vote, it's one vote, it's, at that point in time, it's not individual votes anymore, and that's where I, that's where I feel like we don't follow that anymore, it's recommended that members of the community or media who request an individual board member's perspective should be directed to the meeting's official video in minutes, and the product of the vote is a board, not an individual outcome. So I would just like to, I would like to have additional conversation around that, I guess, at some point in time.
I thought we had moderated that language a little bit.
Yeah.
We did, just in the most recent update that was December.
So I, I mean, I get the concept, right?
I mean, we put it in, we did, we talked about it, and we talked about it and put it in here and we approved it, but then I don't think that that actually happens sometimes. I'm just concerned.
Okay, but I, the point I was, I certainly get, the more united the board is, probably there's some good aspects to that, right? But that does not mean that we, you know, people who consent are necessarily voiceless in their perspective. And I thought that we moderated the language a little bit to acknowledge that aspect. But I, I mean, I get it, it's a challenging situation, but, but we still have freedom of speech.
Well, and I get that, I understand that, and again, I think the concept behind that was so that we don't keep bringing things up at the table that we've already voted on.
Right, and I think that's, I mean, I certainly agree with that, but outside of the board, people don't lose their ability to talk about things, and if they disagree with something they're asked about, they certainly can communicate with that, but I agree that once a board decision is made, it's probably time to move on from that.
So that's all I have on that topic. Can you hit on everything that I have on my list too, so.
All right, any other discussion on the handbook? The policy committee will take it away and review? Yep. Right, so I had asked Mr. Paco to bring a statement of work that we had approved for NV5, an old business topic I have on here is to talk about NV5. At last month's board meeting, Mr. Fishel read a statement, kind of saying that we made the wrong choice and reasons why, and kind of pointed fingers at other board members. So I guess what I would like to do is to be a little bit productive with this and say, if there's something that NV5 did not do, that's the conversation we should be having at the table. So I don't know, can we pass out the statement of work and then we can talk about what it is that we feel they did not do and if we need to make any action?
Just to clarify, I printed the entire thing, but basically the very last page is the one that actually spells out the work that was proposed, or the pages before that kind of list out services that can be formed, but not necessarily were what they were used in the last page that spells out.
So I guess, Mr. Fishel, I put it in your, in your hands now to say, what do you believe they did not do in regards to what we had approved that we should talk about?
So I guess I'll go to the end first and then can fill back. The presentation they made had seven or eight errors in it, if it were graded by a school teacher, probably would have been given an F. You can't spend twenty-eight thousand dollars and have that many errors in your presentation. That's number one. Number two, the information that was pre- Number two, the information that was presented to us as options was really nothing different than we already had. It was just reorganized and packaged in a different way and presented. With NV5 early at the end saying, I probably don't recommend you do any of these. And, um, just as a, a simple conclusion on that, it's a total waste of money. So, in, instead of coming in and finding out what we can do, they gave us five options that we can't do. And I don't see how that's productive or a good use of the paper.
So, I'm, I mean, in agreement, there were errors in the presentation, so I don't disagree. But I guess I would ask the options that we already had received. I don't know that we received any of those options. I don't know if anybody else agrees with that or disagrees with that?
I mean, I, I did not think that the, the options were particularly insightful, and I, and one, one comment that was made that kind of sticks with me is, is the question of dollars. And, and she, in the NV5 representative, said, well, nobody brought that up in the, the context of, of the focus groups or the interviews. Well, it wasn't a very broad conversation, and I suspect that, that I mentioned dollars in my conversation, and I wouldn't be surprised if Mr. Fishel did as well. And, and so I, I think that was, that, that could lead one down the, down a path that is, is fraught with, with, uh, challenging execution, because, because dollars are, are fundamental to what we're, what we're trying to achieve. The, the other, so I, so I, I do agree that that was an issue with NV5. Looking, looking forward, and, and we do have the, maybe we'll focus NV5, the, the second... So regardless of that, I do believe that, that looking at what our needs are going to be in the near term, I, I do wonder if NV5 really, if what we're going to need is really in their, in their forte.
So I'm just looking at this document, I'm looking at phase one, the, the plan that they were supposed to prepare and execute summary for each viable option, and it says they were supposed to provide cost estimates based on square footage and information that the owner provided reports, and that should new options become viable absent of current design documents, cost estimates will be based on current market conditions and approximate square footage. So as far as I'm concerned, they, like, we, that's what we asked them to do, that is what they did. I get it, it's not as detailed as you might have liked it, but we, that's what we asked them for, and that's why we're having additional work done. They were just, just to come in and give us options. I don't think that this stage was supposed to give us actual facility costing, that's what the engineering studies are for, so, I mean, they did.
So, and, and I suspect you're correct, but what they, what, what could have been, there could have been, out of the conversation, because I know we, we talked about a number of different things, there could have been more value add based on the con, because she's the only one who spoke to all of us, right? There, there could have been other, I don't recall there being like, well, here's some interesting dots, or here's some other, other ideas that, that might need to be considered in the mix going forward. So, so she did the mechanics, there's, right, she, did she do this probably in many ways, other than the, you know, the errors were obviously an issue, uh, in her presentation, but, but she was in a unique position to, to engage all of us, and it would have been nice if she could have leveraged that for, for something a little bit more creative.
So, I, I'm just going to ask though, like, who, at the end of the day, she, she was right, she talked to each one of us individually, whatever, she had focus groups with different groups of individuals and people, you know, involved at the school. I don't know that we asked them to come to, abord, like, that we wanted to have more work sessions, to have conversations with them. We didn't ask for that, but I wish we would have done that. I, I wish we would have had more conversations with them, because we would have been able to have more clarification, but we didn't ask for it either. Whether or not, whether or not that was direction that they were being given by administration, I have no idea, but we didn't, we didn't address that, and we didn't request it, and we didn't push more for that either. So, some of that's got to be on us, I mean, we have to all accept that.
Without a doubt. And, and, but I, I think the, the outcome of this is going to bear fruit for us, which is the RFP, and, and we will, and I'll talk a little bit more about it during buildings and grounds. So I, I do think that, that setting the stage for the next phase of discovery, if you will, I think that, that's a good outcome. And, and we can talk about, but, but going forward, then we need to understand what, you know, where, where, where strengths and weaknesses lie in potential owners' representatives. So, but I, I mean, I, I, there were issues, right?
Well, and I think that's why we developed the, the same work we did, right? So we could see, we could at some point say, yes, we want to continue working with you, or no, we don't.
Right, right. And I, and I think that, that, you know, we need to get an assessment, you know, we'll, we'll go through the, the RFP process, we'll get feedback, we'll, we'll have a better understanding. I think the, the key element there, at least from my perspective, is the, you know, the work that's done is prioritized, you know, one most critical, five, you know, you know, more nice to have. And then that way, we are able to work as a board to identify those things that can be addressed, and then we can look at the skill sets of NV5 or potentially other players in whether or not.
What we do.
And what we do going forward. So, but I, I, you know, we definitely, I, I think there are enough questions about NV5. We got a good outcome for the, the question about NV5 going forward. I don't think they're our de facto, we should not regard them as our de facto owners' representative going forward.
I think the information that we get out of the, the RFP process is going to be far more valuable for us, and I think that's, like, at the end of the day, that's where we should be focusing our attention, so.
So, I agree with that, and when NV5 presented to us, and when some members on the board wanted to vote for them because they said this, uh, they said they did offer all services in-house, they could handle everything. They did not need to go outside to hire anything, that's what they told us, that's what they sold the board on. Now, that didn't happen, because after the presentation, uh, NV5 said, well, now you need an engineer's report, and we can handle that for you if you want, but it'll have to be hired out, because they don't do that in-house. So their presentation to us of everything's in-house, not accurate, okay? Plus, the, the buying of it failed, uh, all the information that went into that project and amount of money that would be needed to build, uh, and the people that were interviewed for that, the same people were basically interviewed. Now, I wasn't on the board at that time, and I was interviewed, so I was a different person that was interviewed, but I think there was only one or two others. And so we basically got the same information, packaged a little bit differently with different options, and it had no value. And, and when we spent $28,000, was it, something like that? And there's seven or eight errors in the presentation, I don't see how anyone thinks that's acceptable, when we're spending a lot of money. People work hard, pay the taxes, and to spend it like that, I think, is just not a good idea. I think we need to look to get things done, and when, when, when we're looking at a national corporation that's going to take a big overview and look at it from a distance, that's going to cost us more money. And I think if we take the local guy who, who was just successful in Shaker Heights in executing the Fernway project and, and some other things, uh, and, and being more hands-on, I think that we'd be better served by them, because I think our dollars would be spent more judiciously and more carefully, with, with an attention to what we really need, instead of a big overview umbrella. So anyway, again, coming back to, they said they do everything in-house, and it's just not true, because now they said they have, we have to hire outside to get an engineer's report.
Is there any additional feedback that we want to take the NV5 to provide to them at this point?
We've got the RFP, it's out, right? It's posted. We're expecting results soon.
And, and we all had opportunity to review it and critique it, and we made some changes based on our review, which I think made it a better RFP. So, let's, let's see how that comes back. And, and, uh, on March 27th, which is this coming Monday, the, those who want to get more information will be able to tour the buildings in question, and they get a sense of, you know, they can take their own, they will have their opportunity to take their own take on the material condition of the buildings.
We had an update during the strategic plan, but it's just one of the topics that makes sense to continue that conversation. So we had, the deadline was this past Monday, the firm submitted a statement of qualifications. We received statement of qualifications from six different firms, and then so they're going to be invited back on Monday, the, you know, as optional to come, if they want to see the facility before they put a pricing proposal. And I think it's due April 5th, we're going to take those pricing proposals to buildings and grounds, it's on, on 11th or 12th of April, I, I, it's on my presentation later, so we're going to have internal updates week to that point. And then we have two, three weeks to decide the contract, where we need to open it up to the full board, to have a work session, or whatever, correction need to go, we'll kind of figure that out, and, and those discussions are there.
So I know Mr. Placco mentioned to me, we have a couple of different options at this point, um, you know, we can have NV5 take a look at what does, what is submitted, um, based on the proposal, and, you know, some people, some perspectives. They are, for our contract, we have per hour kind of agreement with them, so we have some options as a board. I don't know that we have to decide tonight, but just something that we should consider, um, kind of what is our next steps when everything comes in. Do they have to give you an RSVP? Those, those.
It was on our RFPs and tapes, but I was planning on saying on email tomorrow, we'll perform exact locations and times on Monday.
Are they, are they all due at the same time?
Yes.
Or are they separate?
Exactly the same time. Because being spring break and limited staff, where's, I mean, Rich and I are going around taking some teachers, so.
I think it's important, we can, we are, we have a company working for us, and we talk about what's our limitation of, of money. And, and to Mr. Fishel's point, the options were very similar to what we proposed, but we really didn't share those options too much with them. It, it's almost as if they affirmed what we were thinking as administrative team, this is how going forward. It comes with a big price, that's the thing. If we can't, that's not, um, if, if we're not going to tolerate the amount, then the RFP is going to help us determine where our priorities lie in terms of facilities and systems, and where to go from there, and scaling it back.
Right, right. And, and I definitely agree, but, you know, it's not all that surprising that the, the options were similar, because it's the same group of people that were interviewed for the input, and, you know, and then, and then, you know, we obviously got feedback last November, November or last, or was it, was it May? I guess it was May, that, that big dollar items are not particularly on people's list. So we, we just need to figure out how to move forward with existing funding as it, as we have it, and, and apply it as best we can and as logically as we can. And again, that the prioritization of what the, those who will hopefully submit bids, the prioritization of one through five, one being, you know, critical, five being, you know, again, more, what I would categorize as nice to have, that, I think that will be a very useful tool for us to move forward, to get the maximum dollar bang for the buck, I guess is what I would say. But, but I guess it's, it's not, it's not all that surprising that, that we ended up with, with some similar things that, that we now recognize are not financially piece of work this time.
I think it gives us a picture, right? And then we figure out what we can do.
Right, right, exactly. But, but we, but the bottom line is, we can do something, we will do something, and, and I do look forward to, to working with everybody to, you know, come up with a plan that maximizes the dollar, and make some improvements to, to the facilities we have.
Thank you. I just want to make sure we want to take any feedback or anything for NV5 based on last month's?
Well, my opinion is that any money that we spend on NV5 is, is not well-spent, and I think they've proven that thus far. I don't know why we, we would continue to give them money.
We, we do, would have to, as you indicated, Mrs. Krasinski, that we don't have time about it today, but I do think we, to your point, we'd have to really have an agreement on what potential value we add. They would actually range the table and review in the, the, the bits.
Next steps.
Right. And, and if you can think of, if there's something that they can bring that we can't uniquely provide, then, then, then we just need to have a discussion in how we might get that, that expertise to, to look at the, at the proposals.
Oops, I'm just looking for my, was that all that was on old business?
I think we had, this, this kind of just dovetails into what we're already talking about, and I would find it to talk about the RFP.
So, I, I'm just checking to make sure there's nothing on old business? Go ahead with me one second.
That's it, I printed your name.
Okay, so.
That's it.
So new business, um, we can start with your sky, uh, Mr. Fishel, I know you said engineer's report, so.
So it's, it's basically a continuation of this discussion and conversation. In, when I first read that, not being an engineer and, and not being well-educated in that, I saw a couple of small items that I wanted to take and I find I got cleaned up, but, uh, as I have educated myself a little bit further, um, it's, it's at least my understanding that what we are asking for is a company to come in, or the engineering companies, whoever would get, get the contract, we're asking for them to come in and actually go in and see, like, on a pump, what's the manufacturer and serial number of that pump? I mean, we're asking, the analogy would be if, if, if we want to, if, if, um, if the oil light came on in a car and the brake, and the brakes were grinding, and, and we needed, and the tires were getting low, needed new tires, what we're asking to do is send that car back to the manufacturer, basically, or have an engineer go in, take that car apart, give us the water pump manufacturer, the serial number on that, all the different components of the car, the tailpipe, the, the catalytic converter, the, the manufacturer, the serial number, it's getting very, very in-depth. So there's something called the ASTM that covers a lot of things, and then there's other steps, as I understand it, that are going well beyond that. So, we're really asking for something that is, that is so comprehensive, it may be three, four times greater than what we need. And the amount of time that's going to be required for that, um, I don't know for sure, because I don't know enough about it, but the numbers I'm putting together looks like we're going to be spending $600,000 or more for a report like that. So anyway, I'm just, what I'm raising is a discussion, is do we need to go that deep as to get serial numbers on pumps, uh, to get this report, or do we need a little bit scaled back condition report of, of what the buildings are without, without getting to that detail?
So, if I, if I may add one, one aspect, and maybe everybody was, was fully tracking, but, but the, the standard by which we requested feedback on was the ASTM, which I forget, it's American Standards Testing Material, something along those lines.
Yeah, we're just now going into processes, because it's no longer just material.
Right, I, I came across ASTM standards when I worked for Uber's on the, the Wayback issue. But the, the question is, they have, have, so they've gone into the realm of defining what a, what to look for in a, in a refurbishment of a, of a building. Is it, is it too granular and too detailed for what we, we really need, is, is the question? So I, but I, 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 I hear you, and it may be, I, I, you know, everybody's already moving forward with, with that as it was, and we did have the opportunity to, to maybe ameliorate that at, at the time that the RFP was, before the RFP was actually let out. But, again, I think the, you know, potentially the, the saving grace to all that is the prioritization. It still allows us more of a menu selection, and, and, and in the end, you know, we don't have unlimited dollars. We just, obviously don't, and, and so we, we, that'll be a, a governor, if you will, on, on whatever we get back.
So the question is, would we want to put a cap or a limit, a limit on how much money we spend, and then get some feedback from the companies that are going to look at this to say, well, we can give you really what you're looking for if you remove this, this, and this, and you'll still get everything you're looking for? Is that a possibility?
But I believe the next step in the process is for us to get their quotes, right? For them to send in what they think they can do the job for, and that's our opportunity then to review those and ask additional questions, right? We don't, we are committed to saying, yeah, we're going to accept this.
We're not getting checks based on.
Right.
I was just saying, so.
I think I get the answer to that. The answer is yes.
Gary, I think the, the deal is that we would have to reject the bids and go out and bid again.
Right, it's one of those things where, you know, this isn't like a, this isn't like a formal construction bid type of process, it's a little more informal, so it, you know, the board reserves the right to reject all proposals when we get them, or, you know, we've already solicited statements of qualifications, we have firms that are interested. If, if the pricing comes in too high, we can revise that scope and go back to those firms that already submitted their qualifications and say, hey, what we asked originally might have been too much, tear it down, we can revise pricing, and then, you know, at the end of the day, selection is based on best value, doesn't mean low cost per se, it'd be, you would just look at their qualifications and what they can do work for, and have conversations with the, with firms, and choose what's, what's the best option. Doesn't necessarily have to be lowest, it could be.
Right, and so, part of what I'm saying, I guess, is, when this was put together, it's my understanding that Dan McIntyre, the attorney, put it together?
Uh, NV5 put together the. Uh, NV5 put together the RFP and you invited him to-
Okay, so actually NV5 put it together. And so, I know I didn't get a talk from them, ask them, you know, any discussion about it. Did they talk with anyone? And then my curiosity is, with them having the company, corporation that they have, uh, shoot, they, they have available to them, if not in-house, at least available to them to get some consulting. Um, I'm just, I guess I'm a little curious as to how we got that product. Um, I guess we, we didn't, we didn't have a lot of communication on that. So I guess, I thought, I thought the attorney had done it, really. I didn't even know they had. So I don't know if there was an email that went out that said, hey, this got sent to NV5 for them to produce. I don't think I ever saw that.
I think that's what we agreed to when we-
At the work session?
At our work session, that we would have the corporate theory to choose that are assumed-
I was going to say, I never agreed to that, and I know there was no vote. So if it was just a verbal discussion, I certainly don't recall that. Anyway, it's, okay, so we are where we are, right? So then the question is, how much are we going to spend to get what we need? Um, it's just, everyone has an opinion, it's my opinion. Uh, we don't need to spend as much as the prices are going to come back, but that can be open for discussion. And, and maybe the board wants to spend that much to get that much detail, I don't know. I'm, I'm just offering up some thought and consideration that we might not need to spend that, that much money.
Well, we don't know what that cost is yet, so I would ask that we reserve that judgment until those quotes come back and we open them and see what they look like.
I think it's more of the value, it needs just to finance the dollar, right? Three dollars is important, but there's a lot more determined than just the dollar, right? It's what we're going to get out of it, how is it going to help us prioritize?
Well, that's what I mean.
The qualifications of the person that we choose, things like that, I think those all become important.
Right, and I, and I don't disagree with that. All I'm saying is, like, going back to the car analogy, you know, if, if, if the oil light is on and you need a computer check and there's a sensor that needs replaced, that's fine. You need an oil change, that's fine. You need an oil filter, that's fine. You need new brakes, you need new tires, okay. But we don't need to go find out what the catalytic converter manufacturer is and the serial number on that to get that done. So I'm just saying, there's, there's a practical approach to this, and, and we can certainly go to the nth degree, absolutely. I think that's, that's how this is drawn up to do. And I think it's, it's several layers more. And, and what I'm saying is, if we were to have had some input from people that have that kind of experience, I, I think that maybe we could have done a better job of putting this together. That's all, that's all I'm suggesting. So obviously, people are going to give some numbers, and we're going to review them, and we'll discuss it at that time. I'm just hoping we don't have to spend that much money.
Any other discussion? Okay, good. All right, the last thing on new business is guidance department.
I want to hold that to the next month, I need to think about that still, what I want to do.
Okay.
Can I, can I just make one thing about the Painesville Township plans?
Yep.
So when we were talking, you know, the Painesville Township, I, we used to previously, um, Tom, you'll remember this, you were on the board at the time, um, make a concerted effort by board members to collaborate with our townships on a more regular basis. And we, as board members, agreed that we'd do that, and we each took a township, you know, in our district and would go and attend their trustee meetings. Um, I know that I went to the Concord Township once, that was my, you know, that was my domain, that I was supposed to cover those. And they gave me some time on their board agenda once a month to just update them on what was going on in, in our district and being able to provide the community with that information because of their publicized meetings. And they actually gave me a standing agenda item, um, every, every, once a month. And that, that might not be a bad practice going forward. Um, and that maybe was something that we would like to consider trying to do again, because as developments and things that go on in the, in the townships, we don't have them come here on a regular basis. And we don't go out to them on a regular basis as board members and just have some conversation with them and collaborate. I think collaboration is important, you know, to, to the tune that we've got a development going on in, in Painesville Township that we just need to have the pulse on that, and I think that's important. Um, so it just might be something that we want to consider going back to, um, moving forward. It doesn't have to be regularly, but just for, for some thought, maybe we can consider that in the book forward.
You know, Mr. Placco, you're going two times a year?
Yes.
Are you thinking outside of that too?
Yeah, yeah, we, like, I, we went one, every month. Like, somebody went to, like, I went to the Concord Township meeting every, every month. Somebody went to the Painesville Township, one of the trustee meetings, every month. And we actually just went and listened, and, and it was a good time to listen, to hear what's going on in their communities. Um, it wasn't reciprocated, they didn't come here. But again, we were there to be able to tell them what was going on with the district. So, um, there was a little bit of back and forth there. So I just think it's, um, it's always good to collaborate, it's always good to be proactive. Um, I don't think that it can be a bad thing. We just got away from that, I'm not sure why.
And on that topic, it's actually, it's also an update during my report, is I heard from Andy Rose and Concord Township, and they're actually looking to come to convening either in April or May. So I said probably April would be best, unless I want to see the final forecast in May.
I'm sure they do.
As long as the board is okay, if I, if we're to their schedule, they're looking to come in on, on the 22nd of April.
Yeah, I know, I'm willing, I honestly always have the intention to try to go to our Concord meeting, but it conflicts with another commitment that I have. So, um, that's always my challenge, but I have no problem trying to make sure we-
And even as a, as an administrative team, I know that everybody, nobody wants to have another meeting, but even if it's, even if it was just, you know, once a quarter, that there was one representative of each community that would come into the district and have some conversation for an hour, an hour and a half, or whatever, with the district administrative team, just so that people are, hey, like, kind of shooting the breeze, what's going on in your community? Why don't you tell me what's going on in there? No one ever wants to talk about curriculum, I would love it if they could.
But you know what I'm saying, we don't, we don't do that, we don't-
I, I hear you, I, I think that's, that's truly a nice to have. And, 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 yeah, it's a nice to have, and may there be some value potentially, but, but we've got so much going on and so many other meetings already incorporated into our schedule of that. And then, you know, and all of us are busy outside of schoolwork, I know that. I, I just, I'm not, and if, if Mr. Placco is going twice a year, there is, there is some communication. So I guess I would be less inclined to do it, but certainly if people wanted to volunteer to do it.
We didn't talk to Andy Rose and Concord Township for the right places. Um, I used to talk to Mike Manry and Andrew Trump for the right places. Since he's retired, and he's taken over, and he's left, and I'm not even sure who took his place at this point, haven't built that new relationship. We've been talking on other places, he called me every so often. I write, well, the most frequent call I got was he'd get a complaint that the garbage company took trash, or too early in the morning, someone called a complaint, and he'd ask us to remind them not to come in at a certain time in the morning.
I just think at the end of-
It's like a schedule with a, you don't go regularly schedule trustee meeting, but if you're talking a quarter, like, you talk to them.
Well, okay, so maybe, maybe I guess what I'm getting is five communities, a representative from all five communities that we serve and administrative, somebody from administration, who's actually having a conversation in the same room at the same time. We have, we have facility issues, we have, we have facility issues, we have enrollment issues, and we're going to have to address that. And if we have, my concern was, we're going to have a development that can bring more students to our already overcrowded schools, and you know who's going to have to pay for that, is five communities, not just one. Getting people in the same room at the same time is not a bad thing. You're going to be asking, potentially, you could be asking the public of four other communities that is not Painesville Township to help pay for schools, to help pay for the influx of students that are coming from Painesville Township. I'm not saying development of Painesville Township is bad, I love it. But at the end of the day, we are, we are asking members of other communities to, to assist with that. We are, we are not just Painesville Township schools.
Okay, I, I have no problem committing to go with Mr. Placco like I did to Leroy.
I don't, again, I'm not saying it's a matter of us going to them. I'm saying it's a matter of getting all five of them together in one room at the same time to have conversations about what is going on in other communities that affects the school district, which eventually then affects them as well.
And I, you know, that, that potentially has, has value, but I don't know what the outcome would be.
Um, a, a more collaborative community, which is-
But, but to what end? I mean, each, each community is going to pursue the development that they, they deem consistent with their, with what they want to see their community be. I'm not sure how, and I, and you're, you're totally right, right? If, if we have a space issue, it's, it's going to impact all the communities, not just the one that is growing the most. So I, I get that issue, I, but I'm not sure how that, unless the outcome of that engagement was to say, no more development in the foot print of Painesville, you know, Riverside schools, excuse me, Riverside schools. I don't know how we would, how, I, I, so I'm not sure-
It's just transparency. I think it's transparency and bringing those people to the table to provide that transparency. We don't, nobody, nobody does it.
Okay.
I see an awareness for us, if they're working on something, like, hey, this could be coming up. I see that maybe they could give us an awareness of something. Um, I don't know, the administration might already be getting those kind of, hey, we're aware these things are happening.
We, we talk to our trustees typically, we don't call and say, how you doing today? How you dealing? But we do call and we talk if there's an issue, and we, we do, we do those things. They didn't come to show up here today, we reached out to them to come and, and address the board. We get calls from Concord. Usually when there's issues going on, that they want to give us a heads up or vice versa, we have the conversations. I, I remember reaching out to the trustees back when we were first trying to build the building. Some, some townships were more interested in talking to us than some of the others. And I know some trustees have changed over the years, and that might change the receptiveness of us coming and meeting with them. Um, but, you know, like, I was thinking the same thing Mr. Hank was thinking, is that they're going to advocate for their own township with, with development and other initiatives and everything else. We can get them into a, in a room together, but again, aside from maybe a particular topic, maybe enrollment, I'm not sure what, what we're going to-
What outcome can we drive?
Yeah, I don't, I'm, I'm not sure.
Collaboration and being leaders and getting, you know, people to have consensus about what they then drive in their communities. Um, I just think it's important, I'm going to, I just think it's important. We may not agree, but that's just my perspective, which is why I asked her to-
Again, I think what we could get from it is awareness, right? So I think this discussion about the development behind a review has been going on. Um, I know I had a couple of committee members reach out to me, and I had sent a note to Dr. Halas just asking, hey, are we aware of this, right? Um, so I wonder, could we have been aware sooner, right, more proactive? And I don't know what else is going on in the other communities, right? That's the only thing, I think we could have it for us in our planning. Again, I don't think we're going to change them, like, hey, don't build this. Like, I don't think we're going to have anything up there, that's not going to happen.
Right, right, it's outside of our lane.
Right.
Although it affects ours, but it's outside of our lane.
Right.
I mean, they've been talking about that for forever.
Okay. It's now just becoming more real.
Well, it is.
Yeah. Sorry.
Two thousand and five is, yesterday, something hasn't happened in fifteen plus years.
As we're still talking, it hasn't been ten years.
Right.
Maybe the first development in the first property we were looking at was, um, Pat Parkside.
Right.
That was back in two thousand and four, was-
A girdle.
Yeah, and there's still a field.
So I, I don't know which company, I remember, um, probably the first year I was on the board, we had them come in and just say, hey, what's going on? I don't know if it's possible to get those back on the calendar, I, you said conference coming in, right? So is it possible for us just to do something like that?
I'm sure they'll, they'll take advantage of that, absolutely.
Does that kind of help, good? Okay. Everybody okay with that? Good idea, Larry?
Okay, we should come to us.
So you're talking about special, uh, report in the beginning?
Yeah. I know they came individually, like, at different meetings, so.
Yeah, the council come last because they just presented.
And we can probably attend around Mr. Placco's visit if we want, because he'll be going out and we might hear instructions anyways, so.
So you're, you're also talking about Grand River Council there. We have some parcels being presented also.
Initially, it was just being filtered.
So let me just put out there that between Grand River, Fairport Harbor, Leroy, I've been fairly familiar over the last few years with what's going on there, and not much is going on there. So, uh, not much is going to go on there.
Not much to keep on top of?
Uh, no.
We'll still give them opportunity to-
It's one of the same. So I can handle those three if you want, and the report's going to be pretty much the same every month.
I, I think we should offer them the opportunity and let them decide if they want to participate, yeah?
Grand River's built out, Fairport Harbor's built out.
And Leroy?
Doesn't want to build out.
Doesn't want to.
Right.
Doesn't have the water to build out.
They don't, I mean-
And they don't, they don't want to.
They're not going to appropriate the hundred dollars to fill a puddle.
Well, then Fairport's not our district, so.
That's true too. They probably are going to make me know. Why did you mention Fairport Harbor, we're not even part of you.
All right, so that takes care of old and new business. That takes us to our committee and liaison reports. Um, the first one is the superintendent's business advisory conference, I do have one. Uh, the next business advisory council meeting will be in late April. Um, we'll be reviewing our draft of the RLSD profile of a graduate, they've been working hard on that. We'll talk about maybe if we can bring that to a board meeting, to when it's ready, to be presented, that'd be great. Um, they've had input from multiple stakeholders on the profile from our community and also our business advisory committee. Um, also, they've been looking to leverage new partnerships. So they are trying to find different ways to establish internships, participate in career fairs, and provide other experiential opportunities for our students. So I think we have something set up with the city, Painesville City, um, already. So that's something that is in development and hopefully soon, or next year, begin next year, we'll-
Well, that's already started.
Oh, okay, it's already started, so I wasn't, I didn't have an update there.
Yeah, we're in talks with, I have been in talks, the Office of Curriculum has been, have been in talks with several entities about doing some outreach and some different programming that we're doing with law enforcement, fire, nonprofits, UH, so we got lots of stuff going on.
And part of that was through-
The food truck, yeah.
Part of that was through Mr. Lewis?
The, the city of Painesville partnership was with Mr. Lewis, with Doug Lewis, yes. And that happened, I think we talked about that actually at the last-
Board meeting?
Board meeting, yeah, I think we laid that out. So yes, we do have students participating in that already.
Okay, great. Um, the other thing that Dr. Basich is working on is adding new members to our BAC that will reflect our school community. So they're looking for different opportunities to bring in some new people, um, to reflect things like the trades, um, military service, um, just to reflect our community a little bit better. So I know they've been, um, doing some searching there.
So that is the update, if, anything, any questions? All right. That brings us then to curriculum and programming committee and alumni association liaison, Mr. Fisher.
So on the curriculum, uh, the course of study update is that it should be, as I understand, completed by the end of the school year. Uh, the testing starts, uh, the testing starts in April. Um, the seniors-only hiring fair, Dr. Basich is putting together something so that there's a, a hiring fair that includes a lot of businesses. So, uh, Ms. Krasinski, similar to what you were talking about, that's, that's in process, because normally what we would have is a college and career day, and that should start up, back up next year. But in the meantime, we're going to fill that with something that hopefully is worthwhile and bring a lot of opportunities through companies coming and presenting to the, to the seniors. Uh, the summer school is going to continue, uh, the ESSR funds are going to take care of the summer school this year. And then there's going to be ongoing discussion as to what the future will hold and what summer school would look like. And so that's the curriculum update. Um, curriculum director, Valacor, is there anything else you would like to add on that?
No, you did a very nice job. Details on summer school will be forthcoming, but it's going to be very similar to what we did. But, because, um, through the programs committee, we discussed since the ESSR funds still exist, that we would run a similar program one more year. Then we'll have to reevaluate how we want to deliver those summer-type services when that comes back to us.
Thank you for that. And then for the alumni, uh, the alumni association president, Kathy Poville, has resigned. Another person has resigned their post because of work requirements. And so they're going to be trying to fill those positions. And just added, I believe, a trustee, and will be looking to add more. So updates will be forthcoming. a trustee, and will be looking to add more. So updates will be forthcoming. The golf outing is the same. The, I don't know if I mentioned it in the last meeting, but the golf outing is going to be Paintsville, Riverside, Riverside Local School District only, not coupled up with Harvey. And already, I think we have more interest this year than what we had as far as foursomes last year. And so hopefully that will grow, last year having been the first year. And so other details from the alumni association will be forthcoming as things develop. Always looking for more members. So if there's anyone that's an alumni, a graduate of Riverside that are looking for you to join, I think it's only thirty-five dollars for a lifetime membership, and so join.
Did you hear that, Fitz?
I did.
Are you not a member yet?
I'm not.
You could go online and become a member.
Probably.
We're recruiting, we're recruiting. Okay. Thank you, I think that's.
All right. That brings us to buildings and grounds operation committee and legislative liaison. Mr. Hack?
So we had a buildings and grounds meeting on the thirteenth of this month. We are, for those of you who have, you know, the key track at home about the kilns, for the new elementary schools, which were completed in time for the 2019-2020 school year, the kilns are actually in the building? Not connected yet, but they're in the building. So is that, is that status changed?
No, it is not used currently against chemotherapy.
So the gentleman who was going to hook them up to, I assume, the natural gas and other electrical and things like that unfortunately had illness. So anyway, we were debating whether or not through buildings and grounds to refer to them as the Dr. James Kailas kilns, but like, there was some contention on that, so I'm not sure that that's gonna happen. We're still thinking about it, so maybe. But we're making progress. They're there, and so eventually they will get hooked up. So there's a lot of, a lot of different things going on, you know. Those of you, again, who are following, there's a heat exchanger issue with the new furnaces at River View and Parkside. Ultimately, we've gotten the new exchangers in. They've been installed at River View, and I'll get an update on where Parkside stands. You know, regular things, you know, we have a lot of square footage on roofs, so not surprisingly, there are things to be addressed. There's a leak over, associated with the library. We're looking to seek that out. It very well can be solved by now, but I'll keep you in suspense and let you know what that status is next week, or next month. They are retrofitting LED lights into the Buckeye Gym, and there has been, which I think is good, will save money and probably improve the lighting. Additionally, there has been some interest and concern about the baseball fields, and so we are doing what we can. We've all seen the weather, and obviously, major things are not possible when your soil is closer to soup than it is to something solid. But we are going to bring in Thomas Fence to look at the backfield, the backstops, and the gates and the fencing. We're gonna look at the JV field. We're gonna do some things. And Mr. Alstich, are they putting in the fence on the varsity field as well for the outfield?
No, we are, we have two different quotes obviously sharing with the buildings and grounds committee in our April meeting. We have a revised quote from Thomas Fence for the outfield for the JV field, and we also have a revised quote to fix damages to all four fields that we have, which is, we have upheaved fencing, we have broken gates, we have some buckled backstop fencing. So those items will be removed and corrected with proper fencing materials. So I will be sharing those with the committee next month.
Terrific. And then Masco is a company in the area that specializes in athletic fields, and so they will, when the weather is suitable, they'll be doing what they can. But again, if you're familiar with the fields, don't expect any major changes, but we'll try to improve what's there to make the fields more playable. We already talked about the RFQ. That's closed, and we are bringing people in on the Monday, the twenty-seventh, and we will continue with that process. There are some things going on down in Columbus. I'm not sure there's a, I think SB one is talking about changing how the Department of Education is organized. There's a, I think that's the one I, there are other education-related bills, but some of them are related to secondary and not, not to the schools, our local schools. But that would create a different environment completely. The Board of Education, the State Board of Education will remain in place, would have very limited duties. Much of the responsibilities would go to a cabinet position within the governor's cabinet, and I think it's, they call it the work-first development. And that would have to be approved by the Senate, the position has to be approved by the Senate. But things are in the flux. So there have been other suggestions along the lines of, you know, can the legislature, for example, override something that the person in that position would do? I'm not sure if we've reached the final version of the legislation that would be moving forward, but there are some other things that are happening. There are always pros and cons, right? I can think of some pros and cons to both that, to that concept. But I do, I am familiar, pretty familiar with the current, with the existing Board of Education at state level. There's definitely some dysfunction there that I don't think ultimately serves us well personally.
There's also some tax implications under, too, right? Gary, what about the homestead tax?
You think about hospital one?
That sounds different.
Yeah, that's a different bill. That's a different.
I mentioned Senate bill.
Oh, hey, I'm sorry.
Yeah.
River View Hospital, that's very important.
And so can I add one thing to that? I believe that the SB one would take away the operational control of the schools from the ODE, Department of Education, and give it to a governor-appointed person. So that's the main crux of the bill. And then the details of that, the law and everything else that goes with that and what it would affect, they're trying to work out those details, right? So again, there's positives and negatives depending on how you look at it, and who knows what's gonna happen. And if it happens, who knows how it's gonna work out? No one knows.
So just to dovetail with all this, the constitution of Ohio does require a state Board of Education, so that Board of Education would remain in place. Don't know if it'd be all elective or the way it is now, partially elected and partially appointed by the governor. But they, in the context of being consistent with the constitution, they would be focusing on licensure would be their, be their focus. So the state Board of Education would still exist, but their responsibilities would be greatly diminished and transitioned over to that position that has been described.
And right now, with the state Board of Education, I think the governor appoints eleven positions out of the nineteen, is that correct? I believe.
Eight, eight.
Eight out of the nineteen. So the governor has a big influence on that. So anyway, you know, things are moving, and who knows how it's gonna work out with this.
That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is policy committee and booster organization liaison, Mr. Garden.
Paul, Mr. Schlitz said there's a new reading coming up, you said tomorrow, so after that, you will get in touch with Mr. Hack and I so that we can get our meeting set up. So hopefully we have the dates on that for our next meeting. And then as far as boosters, there is a community egg hunt coming up on April eighth here at Riverside, and we will actually, the twelfth annual.
Twelve years.
I know, I saw it on my Facebook.
I did. And then my dad built shelves at Leroy, like, in the old barn to house them
all in storm. Yep. Twelve years later, it's still going, so it's really nice.
Wow.
I know.
Right. That's it. Brings us to the superintendent's report.
So we're gonna have an update on our strategic plan. You know, we started the stated twenty-twenty-one with Patrick and Yala. We have some progress going here, and my colleagues from central office are gonna present today. And we're gonna start with Mr. Keravite.
Sorry, I turned a half rate. Both filming and.
You did a great job, Nick. Keep it up.
As Dr. Kailas mentioned, we began a new process for this strategic plan in early two thousand and twenty-one. The board approved contract with ETI, Patty and Lisa, to facilitate that plan. Over the course of the last couple of years, surveys conducted with Board of Education, district administrators, directors, one-on-one interviews. Throughout that time, central office, district administrators and directors met often to garner that input and refine the focus areas. Staff groups, focus groups were conducted. All staff were doing the opportunity to take a survey, to get their input into the strategic plan. Last year, we had student surveys and focus groups for all students in grades six through twelve. Parenting community surveys and focus groups were conducted. Last April, I believe, is when the board approved the plan. And since then, we're gonna kind of, we're gonna use the next ten, fifteen minutes to talk about what has been done since you approved the plan. Our group has been meeting every couple of months with Patty and Lisa to go over updates. This next slide here, this is what appeared in our winter pipeline, which is mailed to all addresses in the district. The first couple paragraphs there just kind of go over what I just discussed, the background of the, how this plan was created. And then all these bullet points below are gonna be some of the things we talk about. So the four focus groups, or the focus areas of the strategic plan are safety, climate, and wellness, advocacy, partnerships, and engagement, physical sensibility, and teaching and learning. So I will start with advocacy, partnerships, and engagement. The goal here is to engage the Riverside community through communication, educational advocacy, and development of purposeful partnerships with local businesses and alumni. Part of that is increasing communication and transparency. One of the goals we had for this past year was to provide training and develop shared practices to engage first-line communicators. And by that, we kind of mean our classified staff, some of the staff members who aren't in the classrooms every day talking to kids, talking to parents. These are some staff members who may be starting a job in the custodial area or driving a bus who don't have a background in dealing with kids or parents. So we actually reached out to a couple other several school districts to see if they've ever brought in like a customer service type training, like an outside organization. We did receive a few recommendations. We met with one of the individuals who does this kind of work. That was in January. However, it was determined by our district department directors that they would prefer this type of training or share an expectation outcome to come from central office administration. And when we do introduce a new superintendent, starting with the twenty-three, twenty-four school year, it'd be a great opportunity to go to those opening meetings with classified staff, come in there, talk about the expectations that we expect from those employees, go over some communication guidelines and some situations, you know, how to, how to deal with, you know, students, how to deal with parents, how to talk to them, how to develop a positive relationship. Because again, a lot of, a lot of those staff members, they don't have that background of working with kids or parents on a day-to-day basis. Create a data-driven decision-making process for annual revisions of our communication plan, how do stakeholders want to be communicated to. So we are going to, starting this spring, probably mid-May, end of May, do a district-wide community and parent survey at the conclusion of this school year, to garner feedback and input from stakeholders to see how they feel we're communicating at the teacher level, the building level, and at the district level. Typically, anytime we do a survey, we do include a public communication or transparency questions, but we haven't in a long, long time just done a survey directly involving communications and transparency. So look for that in probably about mid to late May. Student leadership teams meeting with principals at all our buildings. This is something we hope principals can develop a close relationship with the student body, become more aware of any issues or concerns. Students, then the hope is students become more vocal in the school and in the community. This year, all of our buildings have implemented a student group that meets periodically with the principals. Some of them had it in place going back to last spring. Some of them just implemented it as recently as February, so it's an ongoing process. This is an opportunity for students to discuss building culture, student interests, school initiatives, and more. And this is also a shared initiative with our safety, climate, and wellness piece of the strategic plan. Then the other part of this is developing business partnerships and engagement, developing an educational advocacy plan and making Riverside a valuable voice to inform policy rather than react to it. This is about being actively, I just had a big discussion about it, being actively engaged in local, state, and federal policies and impact public education in relation to Riverside. Mr. Placko, as discussed, treasured, has been attending local trustee meetings, provide updates about the district. Sounds like a decision has been made that we're gonna start inviting the township trustees to come to our meetings to give updates going forward. The board has been active in addressing local, state, or federal policies that have potentially had an impact on Riverside or our community. Just kind of keep developing and strengthening that relationship with the trustees around here, just so, you know, we are a unique school district that we serve several different governing bodies. You know, it's not like a Menor where it's all Menor City Council of Perry where it's all Perry Township, but we have five different governing bodies that we, that make up our district. Strengthening our business advisory council, defining a purposeful partnership, and expand opportunities for work-based experiences. We want to get a representation of all local businesses, tap into new businesses, and enhance student opportunities and real-world experiences. Our business advisory council is very active. We've already had several meetings this year. As mentioned, as Krenski said, Dr. Basich is always looking to expand that council, looking in to bring in different businesses and organizations that will make sense to help with our students. This group is currently working on a new draft for our Riverside High School portrait of graduate. Outside of our business advisory council, we're still, you know, working with several businesses in the community and looking for new relationships. We have speakers regularly from area businesses coming to all of our schools to talk about careers and opportunities. As Dr. Malakar discussed a couple of minutes ago, partnerships with the city of Paintsville to create work-based learning opportunities, additional opportunities for career-based intervention students as well, partnerships with United Way for Public Service Corps, and eventually expanding into police, fire, and other agencies. Just bringing in new businesses and sponsors. Last year, we implemented the banner sponsorship program. We, last year was the first year, we had about twenty-five sponsors. We brought in thirty thousand dollars. This year, we have thirty sponsors, and that brought in forty thousand dollars. And those funds are going to our athletic department. And that, to me, isn't really, I mean, the money's great to bring, but it's also just opening the door, starting a new relationship with the business, getting them involved in our community, in our school district. Lastly, for me, utilizing the Riverside High School alumni to increase community engagement. Alumni can be some of our greatest assets by sharing news and events with the rest of the community, keeping them involved and engaged, recruiting current seniors and recent grads to strengthen and expand our alumni association. So far this year, we've had a lot of alumni return to our schools. We always make sure to highlight them on our social media pages and our newsletters. We want them to still feel like they're part of the district. They're still always welcome to come back. We want them to feel like it's home for them always, whether they've been gone for one year, ten years, twenty years. In April, we will be conducting a survey of the class of twenty-two on how they've been doing. been doing since graduating, and going forward, we will be doing that every year for the recent graduating class. We also want to continue collecting personal information from our graduates to keep them, to keep in touch, send them newsletters, recruit them to come back, visit our schools. And lastly, we always want to hear good things going on with our alumni. We want to highlight them as much as possible. That makes them look good, Riverside look good. And again, we just want to strengthen that relationship and make them always feel like this is home to them. And with that, I will turn it over to Mr. Placko.
All right, fiscal sensibility. Our, our goal here is to maximize return on investment from funding sources, seeking new revenue streams for facilities planning mutations, improve physical safety, and financial support of district priorities and strategies. We've talked a lot already about facility improvement and investments, obviously looking to make improvements since the May bond issue last year obviously was not supported. And we've already kind of talked about, we hired MP5, that helps us with the moving forward. We've got the RFQ for the facility condition assessment and just to confirm that the statement of the review was passed Monday, six firms submitted, walking the buildings next week on the twenty day, with pricing proposals due on April fifth. Buildings and ground will review that on the April eleventh and determine next steps, but potentially the board considering contract on April twenty-seventh and fall, fall time. We'll figure out. Also with facility improvement investments, one of our goals is to decrease disparities between buildings, just analyze in terms of ways the disparities exist. Obviously, we have two new work to start the buildings and several legacy buildings that are around, and trying to make them, you know, try to decrease those disparities. Following along with the design phase of the secure vestibule project for Riverside campus, the movement of Buckeye and Mallory, Dr. Three schools, to build the secure entryway that follows all normal safety protocols that are expected in buildings today. That's looking to be how we did this April, with potential construction this summer that is getting late, I don't know if that's gonna truly happen this summer. We'll either try our best to see what that timeline looks like, and we'll at least get it out good, and get our price locked in. And then, the other one, we're just waiting on the facility condition assessments to determine if we'll be able to move forward. I'm also looking at developing a five-year technology replacement schedule that we've found already, expanding upon just improved technology and support teaching and learning. And the company has already developed a five-year budget to sustain what we currently have. And we're not discussing more on what the future looks like. Getting to fiscal stability, one of our goals was to develop a new cash balance policy incorporated at your view, you know, on a regular basis. So the board adopted new policies six, two, three, four in December of twenty-two. Basically, the policy states that the goal of the district is to maintain at least ninety days general fund reserve. And we do that each time we update the five-year forecast, which is required to be done in November and early March this year. So we'll continue to monitor that, and, you know, we're in a good position right now. And as, as that timing, that, you know, along the time, we'd be closer to that fiscal cliff, and we want to address how we move forward. Also fiscal stability, seeking grants and revenue streams for district initiatives to continue to prepare annual review of grants. So we, every year, we quality profile, we usually highlight some of the grants that, on our guarantee screens, are grants that we get awarded throughout the year. And we applied for an award of thirty thousand dollars for the Ohio K-12 safety grant. It's a hundred thousand per building for our legacy buildings, and those will be used towards that vestibule project that I mentioned a few slides ago. This gives another example of grants we applied for, a fifteen thousand dollar grant through how real workers compensation for HVAC safety, the purchase of thirteen filters for HVAC systems that was awarded. We made those purchases. Those are filters we've already used, but it helps supplement our general fund expenses, range, grant funds. Some other grants, we applied for a twenty thousand dollar school safety innovation grant to Attorney General's Office. That's a new grant came out this year for safety, or for camera upgrades. That deadline's hard to refer, so I assume sometime in May or April, maybe we'll hear something on that one. We also applied for the, I agree, there's another just general Attorney General's Safety Training Grant, which gave a couple twenty-one, twenty-two thousand dollars for that one. We, here, we also got approval from OBE, Department of Education, to use our, some of our remaining asset funding to employ school safety officers in all revenue schools with the, you know, knowing that when that left fund stream runs out in the next year or so, it's going to go back to general fund. And as Mr. Perry might already mention, the banner sponsorship program that generates funds for the athletic program, since we began the program in summer of twenty-twenty-one, we raised seventy thousand, one hundred fifty dollars to do that program. Looking at another goal of communication of district finances and just conducting external meetings, so basically going to the various township meetings and we'll plan to go back. Of course, we probably will have an updated menu, including one of my financial update and provide other updates as well, which I touched on some other topics while in the financials, to kind of give general dates on those things. And another goal is to write at least one financial article in all certifications, so we put out some articles about the Florida Safe Grant that appeared in winter pipeline, also on our website, other places, have a list of topics for future financial articles, and the next ones we plan for our fiscal year twenty-two audit, which wrapped up this past week, to be released on March twenty-eighth. And there's another clean audit, so we should be getting the honors, the awards, the eighth and second of the year for that, so we've done a pretty good job. Thank you. And that takes us on the safety climate.
The next section, of course, is safety, climate, and wellness. Make Riverside safe, healthy, happy place to work and learn, through the development of healthy organizational habits. I'm gonna turn it over to Ms. Ayliff first, and then Ms. Laney will speak, and then I'll end the Arlo section.
Nope. Yep. So the first piece within our safety, climate, and wellness subcommittee is to develop staff celebrations and support programming for recognition programs as well. So our outcome measure goal is improved employee engagement, improved sense of community. So in November and January, our district administrators and directors have met to start documenting what our current recognition practices are throughout the buildings and departments, because there are a lot of them, some are formal, some are very informal. We even, again, in that second meeting, started sharing ideas and strategies, starting all that intentional kind of programs that ties to our cultural playbook. As a district, having something moving forward that we're all doing the same kind of initiative and recognition programs. So our next steps include creation of a shared schedule and tracking system. I know it sounds a little bit in the weeds for recognition, but it's so each building or department can go in and say, we did this in our building, here's the timeline, who it was for, who we recognized, who we celebrated. And it's something that we'd be able to see at the central office level, so we can also help celebrate them at that achievement, and even bring to the community to share wider. Looking ahead in twenty-three, twenty-four, kind of our next year goal is including collecting employee feedback from this year's efforts and changes that we have made, looking for an employee employee kudos program, just a quick thank you, informal, and that way you keep it going, and develop the development of a district-wide multi-tier recognition program. So with their feedback, with what we've done so far, we hope to get very structured programs in place. The next piece of that is to increasingly publicize employee support programming. Our outcome measure is improved employee engagement, decreased absences, increased employee retention and recruitment. So again, in November, I, as the HR department, started emailing the district resources, just letting them know our current resources we have available, not only through our benefits program, but we do have an employee assistance program within both of those, there's lots of good perks. That was set in November, right before the holidays started. That's typically when things get tough for people, just so they knew that those were available. I do plan to send a next round here coming in April. We actually just met this week with our, the consortium that were a part of our benefits program, and they're gonna be providing us more materials and programs that they are developing on their end that we'll be able to share in the coming school year. So I'm looking forward to that. Next steps are enhancing our current materials, so that's a big piece of it. I'd like to be able to provide at recruiting time and periodically throughout the year what your full scope of benefits look like. So a benefits overview handout for potential employees and our employees' own, it's clear and transparent. And then continuing to develop and schedule those wellness communications, not just here's our benefit program, but continuing programming and what else we can do. And the last piece is increasing accountability for staff and creating monitoring for calls and coaching activities. So that outcome measure is improving employee engagement and ongoing performance management. So administrators and directors met in December to discuss current challenges that they're seeing in their departments and their buildings. Were people kind of falling behind on performance expectations? We had a leadership training, and we're still kind of working through those pieces together. And what came from that training was that it'd be very helpful if we got, as a district, what a job expectation map could look like for an employee. Someone walking in the door in a certain position saying, here's your job, position description, here's what we expect of you, and here's how you can be successful in this role. The curriculum and teaching side of the house kind of already started that with the Riverside Way and their checklist that they have, that they've started. We see that as something that these maps can become on the classified and support staff side. So we've started a template, just kind of brainstorming what that could look like. So focusing on the classified staff between our team and the directors, we hope to develop that further in the next steps. And looking ahead, just enhancing the evaluation process for our employees. It's kind of outdated, it's a paper form, and it definitely could use an update, so that's coming in the future.
So another area of focus for our committee was proactively identifying at-risk students and create programs to address discipline and mental health. And one of our goals was develop a district-wide discipline protocol in tier one, two, and three supports. The outcome measure for this would be that the discipline procedures align with our PBIS support system, which is positive intervention support. And then our steps would be our MTSS implementation team, which MTSS stands for Multi-Tiered System of Supports, will be meeting between April and June to determine the common language around our tier one, tier two, and tier three, and then identify criteria for each tier and review academic and behavior screeners. Another goal was to improve relationships between students and teachers by building empathy. And here, the outcome measure is to build stronger adult-student relationships, or opportunities to understand and share the perspectives of another. And at the high school, our PBIS team is implementing a check and connect program for struggling students, specifically for current grades eight through nine, or eight and nine, and incoming eighth graders. And then I believe the last goal is create a system to identify at-risk students and staff and connect them to resources and programs to address mental health, on safety, and substance abuse. This does tie into some of the things that Mallory's been doing as well in terms of addressing our staff. And the outcome measure here is an identification and programming system available for the Riverside community focusing on mental health, drug use, and online safety. And then at the high school, there's the implementation of the check and connect, and then district administrators held an initial meeting with the community forum, which is the Educational Service Center, working with building staff to identify student needs. And then another goal was increased communication and shared decision-making, and, I'm sorry, area of focus, and then the goal was to increase opportunities for students to get feedback on the school policy, and increasing student engagement at all levels throughout the district. And then building administrators have been tasked with establishing student advisory groups.
And the last part of one of the larger sections, I believe, you can tell, in our strategic plan, would be the increase in safety. And one of our goals is, of course, to improve the safety of all of our facilities. As Mr. Placko mentioned earlier, all of our buildings currently have security present within the exception of our two new buildings, which is Parkside and Riverview. And of course, as we know, Parkside, Riverview are two of our most secure buildings. But it's my pleasure to make sure that everyone's aware that tonight will be actually led with the employment section, Kerry Warner will be the security officer over at Parkside starting on the twenty-three, twenty-four school year. So the only building that's left is Riverview, and then working with the Lake County Sheriff Department, we will have somebody in place.
We're also in discussions with the ESC over preschool as well, although there's not a lot of kids over there, and they do have a locked door, and we're doing what we can to see what we can do about drawing up some of the security in terms of preschool as well.
And just to add one more thing, I did have a discussion with the sheriff's office yesterday, and I have a chance to convey that they have a candidate in mind for Riverview, and so we're looking at setting up a meeting with that person after spring break, hoping to have that on the April agenda, so we'll be fully staffed and all.
And just to kind of go along with all this, this really is a model that a lot of districts are talking about and trying to actually replicate. So we're actually, I think, ahead of the game here for many districts. We've also had some resiliency training with fourteen staff members and administrators back in October. We also just finished up in January with administrators, some central office, grade six through twelve, which would be throughout assessment training, which was a mandatory training, and other fourteen in total. Those two groups of individuals will eventually form what we will have as a district level team, and that person of court, or this team will also be working with the new superintendent who we did in this twenty-three, twenty-four school year. Improve monitoring of students, also increase monitoring safety for all Riverside community as a whole. Mr. Placko mentioned the vestibule project that's being looked at for Buckeye, Mallory, Meluth, and Riverside Campus. We're hoping that by April, we'll be able to move along on that. We are also in the process of working on upgrading camera and radio communications across the district. The radio communications alone would allow us to communicate from anywhere in the district to any building. That includes the preschool as well. And of course, we're updating our district crisis management plan for two thousand twenty-three and twenty-four, which we will share with the board once that's finished, and of course, the new superintendent is in place. And it's my pleasure now to turn it over to the teaching and learning.
Okay. So, teaching and learning, our overarching goal is to expand program actions and delivery to meet the needs of each student and grow teacher capacity and efficacy. We have three priorities to achieve that goal, to expand course offerings, develop shared instructional expectations, and provide high-quality staff development. So with regards to our first priority, expanding courses and programs, our first action step is to extend career exploration and pathway programming into the elementary and increase career readiness opportunities and technical courses. The outcome measures for this are delineated by level, so we have a high school measure, we have a middle school measure, and we have an elementary measure. The elementary measure is not on here because that work does not begin until year two. So up to this point, at the high school level, we've increased career awareness and pathway options, we've implemented career electives and advanced manufacturing, welding, principals of business, public service, construction, healthcare is in progress, and we've also started the career-based intervention course. We've also implemented the Riverside ready course for eighth graders. At the middle school level, we're looking at addition At the middle school level, we're looking at additional and/or updated course offerings. So currently, we're reviewing the schedule at LeMuth. That will require, if we change anything or add anything, will require a change in schedule. That is done in conjunction with the teachers and the scheduling committee. So we're just looking at some options on how we can move forward at the middle school level. Our second action step under this priority is to create enrichment and remediation programs. Again, the outcome measure for this is to put in place an MTSS program, K-12, and that was the multi-tiered system of supports that Mrs. Lanning mentioned. We have developed a plan. We have four core meetings scheduled between April and June with the hopes that we will be able to roll out to staff next year. Under developing shared instructional practice, our first action step is to develop a shared protocol that defines the ideal instructional environment for students and shows a deep understanding of special education. So the outcome measure for this will be identify teaching expectations at each level. The first step towards that is we've created a Riverside Way document, which details, which was created through staff input administration, on what we expect in each classroom for all of our students. And so once that's completely developed, and we still have some review to do of that, I will be sharing it with all of you so that you're aware of what kinds of things that we want to hold ourselves accountable as teachers in the classroom. Again, developing shared instructional expectations. One of our action steps is to update facilities to enable innovative instructional practices and programming. We're waiting on the Board of Education approval of the facilities plan to move forward with this. So that one is a little bit on hold. Not a little bit, it's actually on hold until we get there. Again, developing shared instructional expectations, using data to drive instruction is an action step. The outcome measure for this will be improve student scores on standardized assessments. Things that we have done under this action step in order to reach that outcome measure, and we've talked about this several times in the programs committee, we designed the course of study document, which you approved. Those docs are tentatively scheduled for your approval in August. So I'm hoping they'll be done in June. We'll be able to kind of go over them as a staff, and we'll be able to start bringing them to you in August. We constructed common assessments. That work is ongoing. So teachers started that on professional development days. And again, we developed the MTSS plan and the implementation with the core team in April and June. What the multi-tiered system of supports does is allows us to look at the data that we have, which is why it's also under this action step, and then make decisions on how we provide support to students so that we can improve their scores on standardized assessments. So that's how that all fits together. That's why you see some of these things under multiple action steps, because they achieve more than one goal. The last priority is to provide high-quality staff development. Our ultimate action step is to get better as teams. How we will measure that is using instructional rounds, which is almost like a medical basis for how you look at your processes and your procedures. So we would like to do that at the educational level, establish those teams and have them up and functioning in every building. The start to that outcome measure is creating the Riverside Way document, so we know what we expect in each classroom to guide our instructional practices and then what we're going to look for when we go into the maintenance room. Increase classified and certified staff awareness of specific student needs, such as special education, behavior concerns, gifted, et cetera. The outcome measure for this will be classified and certified staff, with increased understanding of these needs and strategies to deal with those needs. So we've started working on this. We've provided co-teaching PD to teacher teams at the high school level. That's where we started. We do have some plans in the works, and I think what we do, an update in June, we'll have some next steps for all of my areas, for all of the priorities and the action steps. So that is something that we are working on. Provide central office and building leadership professional development and support to improve instructional supervision is our final action step, I believe, under providing high-quality staff development. The outcome measure is that we'll see a growth in administrative leadership effectiveness. We provided leadership training to all administrators in the district. And one of the actions that came out of that training was, this past professional development day, each level's professional development was developed and created by either the department or the building principals. And then the building principals are monitoring and holding teachers accountable for what they laid out as important for their level, which is a big step, because usually I do all of that. So we're trying to get, you know, raise that leadership capacity at each level by providing some training, and that can lead down to a professional development for teachers. That is it. There's the whole shebang right there.
You know, it's that the most exciting thing in anything.
I'm actually...
I've been waiting two hours for this.
As we move forward, obviously, a lot of this will be done. And just depending on who the next superintendent is, that's one of the first things. We'll get that person on board, go through his strategic plan, and having that person meet with our team and discuss it. That concludes our report tonight.
And follow that up with treasurer's report and committee update, finance and audit and personnel committee and strategic plan.
And an update on the strategic plan. The bonus is you don't have to listen to me updating on strategic plan. So that's the thing.
We can do it, you guys, if you'd like.
But we don't.
Two of them.
Just say it now. That's fine. So I don't need to do that, so I can speak.
So I'll just go, what's that?
We're prepared.
I was absolutely prepared to say all of that. So we'll move on to the finance and personnel committee. We had a meeting on March 16th. One of the things I wanted to dovetail on with the strategic plan, just for the record, that part of that success that we began with our safety resources is probably in part to some of the changes that we made with the contracts for those individuals that provide safety here. That was initiated at the finance committee meeting, so that's like, we actually get to play a part in that. So that was kind of great. It's great to see that people are responding to that on the community, that other people want to emulate that. So that's great. So we started that meeting with the personnel, and the first thing, of course, I have on the list is that we have a resource officer in place for Parkside and Falls, so we've already covered that. We have one to hire. We talked about the fact that the ESC did a virtual job fair and Riverside participated in that. And of course, that was virtual, but they had breakout sessions, and Mallory and I were how that was semi-successful for our first one, and that hopefully they'll do additional ones that will become more successful as they go on. On April 5th, there is a large job fair at University of Akron that we will be participating in for new teacher hires for students. And that is not just for the University of Akron, that is, that where all students in different schools for education can come together and bring their documentation with them, perhaps leave with a job. That's what I was told. So we'll see about that. We'll see if we get, we've had some success in our hiring process so far. We have three hires in process with more postings coming up after spring break that will be going out. We have our summer hires being planned, and those are going forward as we have expected. We have been requested to hire some summertime bus cleaners, which I think we did last year, and that that was successful in keeping our fleet maintained, and that we have some summer ESY workers that we'll be putting on the agenda shortly, or if they're not, like soon, we'll be posting those positions. And then we moved on to the finance portion. We talked about the release of our audit, which is expected on March 28th. And I think the auditor's information, their email, didn't say that we would get the auditor's statement, so I thought I had read that. So congratulations. We did speak a little bit at our meeting about some of the things that are going on at LGCA, which is where we get software support for things like Infinite Campus and our fiscal support services for our financial information. And then there is some, there are some things going on at LGCA where some of the members have left, and there's some mergers going on and whatever. And so that, we're just going to try and keep an eye on what's going on over there and see what's, see how that's going to take us through the summer. Those things are happening over the summer, correct? Okay. Then we talked about, in addition, taking some time over the summer to update the administrative handbook. So we kind of moved that off the agenda for the current meeting that we had, and we will discuss that over the summer. We talked about Frontline, which is the software that we are moving to for time and labor for payroll, and that hopefully that that process is going as smooth as it can be anticipated. Software fees are never easy, and so anticipating all the issues that will arise with that and trying to make sure that we mitigate anything that happens there. We are approving that contract this evening? Or we already did?
We already did.
We already did. If there was something...
Our front line items are...
Oh, that's front, sorry.
That's our...
Frontline, right. So, okay, so then we talked about, one of the board agenda items is to clean up our appropriations, which is pretty standard for this time of the year because we have some federal grant money that we have to be able to spend, and so we have to move some appropriations, and we'll be doing that. There is also the tax, accepting the tax rates put out by the county auditor. That's on our agenda. That's a pretty standard and broad thing that we have to do. We talked about maybe having to requote bus prices, seeing as how things have, prices have gone up dramatically here. What did you say? The price has gone up from like eighty thousand a number of years ago.
In the eighties, and the current percentage was a hundred and twenty-two thousand.
So we have, we participate in the Ohio Schools Council purchase program so that we don't actually have to do the bidding ourselves, but we'll have to probably go back and reregister for that so that we can get our new buses. We talked about the best-of-you-all project that's hopefully going to go out to bid in April, but that doesn't necessarily mean that things might happen over the summer just based on contractor schedules and if they'll be able to actually put us in. So we may actually have to do partial or do something, but we may not be able to get all of it finished over the summer, just based on timing of when that's going to go out to bid. And then we talked about some district property at Melridge Elementary and at the Concord Maintenance Department, and some individuals who are interested in some of those parcels, but we kind of put a fork in that for now. So that's all I have. I think I covered it. Update from the treasurer's?
Just one small item, the LeMuth Maker Space. Did you mention that?
Yeah, well, we did talk about LeMuth Maker Space, but I think Dr. Malakka wanted to have some conversations with the...
You wanted to complete it.
With the team to figure out like what they were going to do with it before.
We have some quotes up there and a discussion.
Yeah. And you wanted to plan and place people.
Yes.
Right. So that's just...
Yeah, that goes to it. That's just, we need to see things over there before.
So I don't feel there was anything that we needed to bring to the table yet, so just... That's all, yeah. Your turn.
Of course, we've covered some of the others that were on my list tonight, but I do a few more things to go over. We've all heard about the recent bank collapses with the Silicon Valley Bank and Signature Bank. We didn't have any funds in those banks. We do have some investments in various deposits in various banks throughout the country. We always keep those under the $250,000 FDIC insurance names until they're, you know, fully insured. So that didn't affect us at all, but I just wanted to make that statement publicly. And then this past Tuesday, I had the pleasure to go down to the Capitol, Columbus, just attend the state legislative conference. Mr. Brasky actually suggested that I might want to consider going, and I decided to go down and see what it's all about. You know, I've heard about it over the years, and now. And so it was nice, it's like a half-day conference where you have to talk to, you have your presentation with the legislators, and then they have a scheduled lunch with your legislators if they attend. Unfortunately, none of our legislators, vocal officers, were there, or that I kind of knew that when I first got there, because they signed a table, and I had, I was sitting with an attorney from Cleveland, superintendent Parma, and then like three treasurers from southeast Ohio. And I'm like, okay, well, we're not here in the same areas. But it was good to hear just about the current legislation and going on down there. You know, Governor Mike Devine was there. He spoke for about a half an hour on his budget primaries. And then we heard from Senate President Matt Uffman and from House Speaker Jason Stevens, who was also presenting. And then the panel discussion with Andrew Brenner, who's the chair of the Senate Education Committee, Representative Adam Fird, who's the chair of the House in the primary and secondary education committee, Catherine Ingram, who's a ranking member in the Senate Education Committee, and Representative Philip Robinson, ranking member of the House Primary and Secondary Education. So it was good to hear them speak, their perspectives on different bills and even their different perspectives, and obviously they're in different sides of the aisle, some of those individuals, and hearing different perspectives, and maybe place some context to some of the bills that are currently being considered. And then when I put a little of the slideshow together, I talked about, I wanted to talk about House Bill 1. I had mentioned this last month, and it was, just came out.
Thank you.
It first came out, this is an interesting legislation, and if you follow those down down as long as, usually House Bill 1 or Senate Bill 1 or top priorities for the House and Senate. And, you know, last by any end was House Bill 1 was the Fair School Funding Plan. So House Bill 1 currently proposed as a monthly part of that. And so the overall arching goal is to eliminate the current income tax brackets and apply a single income tax rate of 2.75% on income over $26,000. So that's the main goal of the legislation, but that cost a lot of money, the taxes rate. So one of the ways they were going to, or will pay for this, was to eliminate the 10% property tax rollback reimbursement for schools and local governments. So levies that were passed prior to August of 2013, if you're a residential taxpayer or agricultural, the state picked up 10% of that property tax. So that, you know, reduced the individual's property taxes by 10% on those levies that qualify, and the state would reimburse school districts and other subdivisions that 10%. So that was basically paid for by income taxes that were collected by the state. So on its own, that change would basically pass the burden from the state of Ohio to the individual taxpayer. Because it's, you know, it's, so it goes back to assessing the taxpayer. So it's on that 10% increase in property taxes on those levies. Now, there's two more points to go backwards to how they were continuing to offset that. There's also revision to the 2.5% owner occupied credit. They're going to get rid of that and make it a flat $125 credit for all our properties. What the effect that is, compared to the other issues that they handled, it's not the main focus right now. I mean, the revision with home state exemption, I don't have much information on that. The main focus is on the flat income tax that they're trying to implement and the leviation of that. So I guess, I probably should have started this first, so we're going to get, it's hard to talk about property taxes and not get into the weeds. So I think if you don't understand some of the things I've thought about, the overall arching summary is, if this legislation passes, it's going to result in a tax increase, property tax increase to residential agricultural taxpayers, and it's going to result in a loss of revenue to school districts and all other political subdivisions. So I'm going to kind of walk through how that happens. So with the elimination of the 10% rollback, the state, in this legislation, decided to reduce the assessed percentage of your property, like your assessed debt. So in Ohio, you pay taxes on 35% of your home then. They're going to reduce that 31.5%, which is a 10% which is a 10% decrease. And then there's a thing in law, in the Constitution called House Bill 920, you probably heard school districts talk about this when they're on the ballot and things like that, but it's basically the first thing. But we'll talk about that in a few minutes. Another thing, interesting thing is they're adding a annual inflation adjustment to that assessment percentage that could result in a 31.5% assessment rate being lowered based on inflation, not increase. So property in Ohio is reappraised every six years, and then there's a triennial updated every three years. So your property value is only gonna change every three years, wow, but they're gonna adjust that percentage every year based on inflation. So one thing's gonna be adjusted every three years, and then it's adjusted by one, doesn't make a lot of sense. That and home inflation and regular inflation may or may not necessarily be correlated. If I haven't watched yet, here's one of them. So, the state's intention was eliminate that 10% rollback to offset and reduce your assessed value to offset that, but because of House Bill 920, which is in the Constitution, if your assessed percentage goes down, your tax rate's gonna go up. So based on some analysis by Legislative Services Commission, which is a nonpartisan body that analyzes, if House Bill 1 was passed by the state, it will be a $929 million increase, tax increase to residential taxpayers and agriculture in Ohio. It will result in a $157 million decrease to commercial property, and it'll also result in a $538 million decrease to local tax revenues for schools and local governments. But that all depends on what each political subdivision's makeup of their levers, because there's different types of levers. So there's.
Can you answer a question very briefly? If not, you can't, I will ask it offline. Taxes go up a billion dollars, minus 150 million for the decrease in commercial, but we still, the, the subdivisions still lose 538 million. Can you make the, can you quickly make that math work? If not, I will ask you offline, because I don't wanna continue on with the, you know.
Right, yeah. Well, I actually have an analysis that'll show how it affects, if that makes sense.
Okay, then I'll wait, I'll await, I'll await, thank you.
So, this legislation is probably one of the poorest, most poorest legislations, like root over, and hearing, what was interesting is hearing some of the legislators at this conference talk about that.
Oh, goodness.
They do not understand what they're actually doing. And I think that's important to get across that property taxes are not simple. And as soon as you mess up one thing, it affects another thing, and it turns into, you have constitutional divisions, you have state law firms. There's been common, there've been conversations of, well, their intent was not to reduce taxes. Well, that's impossible, what, maybe some of what they're trying to do is all the intent or something like that. They also said they're a whole political subdivisions harmless. So I'm like, that's impossible, you can't do both, it's, it's just not possible. And I'm gonna kind of skip ahead just a little bit because I've probably crossed that a little bit of a point. So, if you look at, if you follow along with our, our, we go over this slide, basically our current list of levers in place. And so the very first thing, inside village is, is every, in Ohio, 10% let on inside village. You take all your inside village of various subdivision, add up, so your inside villages that are more than 10 mills, and that's basically unvoated.
And it's never, it's, I'm sorry, I'm gonna be quiet.
Basically, unvoated taxes that's been in place for, forever. That's where the revenue laws become to us, where as values go up, our revenue goes up for those lever, for that inside village, as values go down, we lose one. All the other levers in place are treated differently. And so you see what's called current expense levy, so you have, you know, it's 1976, 1980, 86 current expense levers. Those ones are called fixed rate levers, so the voters approve a certain village, and as values go up because of House Bill 920, those tax rates go down. So like due construction or just general increases due to the house values increasing, as those go up, tax rates go down because of 920, House Bill 920. Well, the opposite is true, we saw that during what's called the Great Recession, where as the values go down, the tax rate goes back up. So during that time of economic downturn, people are like, well, why do my property taxes go down? Well, we kind of called it reverse House Bill 920, because House Bill 920 was just to eliminate inflational increases from that. So we also have what's called the substitute levy, which is also, it's called a fixed sum levy. So basically, that and bond issues are treated the same way. The voters approve a certain dollar amount, that's necessarily a tax rate. So as, as values go up, if taxes tend to 920, your tax rates go down twice first. So, you know, the legislators making, they're just making comments that we're gonna try to figure out how to get around House Bill 920, that's in the Constitution, that applies to those current expense levers you see up there and approved. But substitute or emergency levers or bond issues, House Bill 920 doesn't apply, but the effects are basically the same. And so if they were, if we were to reduce everybody's debt levy in Ohio, because that debt levy's supposed to pay your principal interest payments, basically the state of Ohio's saying, we're instructing every political subdivision to default on that. Well, that's not good economic policy. So there's a lot of things in this bill that don't make a lot of sense. And so I apologize if I've, I've lost everybody.
So, with, they're trying to make a no change, change, yes, is what you're saying? They wanna.
They were trying to, yeah, they were trying to make a no change, change and separate income taxes from property taxes and.
So how does, how does that help them with their 2.75% income tax? Because somebody saved you money somewhere.
The state is basically saving you money, just by eliminating the vote. So now that comes off of their burden and being shifted to local subdivision, school districts, counties, libraries, and individual taxpayer, so they can implement a flat tax rate. And the, the most absurd part is this last slide here, and so they wanna eliminate, they wanna cut the tax rate down to 2.75%. And so according to, of Life High Quality Education, which we're a member of, it's actually, if you look at the, this, the bottom box is the current sliding scale of taxes and what's owed. So if your, if you, if your income is $26,050 or less, you don't pay any taxes in Ohio. The next bracket is $26,051 to $46,100. Your tax calculation is $360.69 plus 2.765% of that amount of the $26,000. Well, the new law would say it's $360.69 plus 2.75. So if you're a taxpayer making $46,100, your tax savings for the state of Ohio income taxes is, if you're in a higher bracket, it's much more substantial. So, it's basically, I mean, you can draw your own conclusion, but it's a tax cut for the wealthier, it places the burden on people on fixed incomes, and it's just really poor legislation. So if you're, you can talk to your legislators, even if you don't, I would probably encourage you to reach out and tell them that this is just poor, poor legislation. And I mentioned that, basically for Riverside, and this is just looking at Riverside schools' levers, not looking at Angel Township, Concord Township, Lake County, Lately Community College, any of those. If this was the going effect as is, everyone's property taxes go up 2.77 mills in Riverside for the school district, which is $97.22 per 100,000 a home. And we would also lose $660,000 annually in revenue on that inside village. So that's what House Bill 1 would do, technically load a flat tax, flat tax rate on state property.
So our community pays more taxes, but we receive less of the district.
Yes.
And what, what ends up happening is, is they do this all the time, they make an income tax rate cut that we don't vote on state or federal income taxes, they just make these changes, and then the burden gets passed on to entities that actually have to ask people to pass more taxes, right? And we're losing money, and this is, it's consistent the way that it works. It's infuriating and the people who are making these decisions, right? I guess for me, the moral of the story is if you, if you want job security, go into school finance because like, right, this stuff is really complicated.
And it's like, if everyone's taxing property tax about 2.77 mills overnight, and then we lose money as well, and then the next time we ask the voters, what kind of support are we gonna get? They're already angry your taxes went up and filed a code as is, and then we're gonna come and say, hey, you know, at some point we're gonna fall off that fiscal cliff and...
Well, it's amplified by the school funding formula, right? That can't be explained.
And that's the other piece too, that as the school funding formula is also based on property tax valuation. So the state's trying to stay funny by doing this on, you know, on their end, but if everyone's assessed valuation goes down, what that's gonna do is generate more money from the school funding formula, so there's a cost there that the state's not even considering. And what that looks like is, is more complicated math than I can ever handle. So I wanted to bring that to everyone's attention, I think it's important that, that this is one of those ones that, that really needs to be spoken out against, and it's just bad debt policy. I totally get what they're trying to do, but they didn't realize all the collateral damage that will happen.
Do they have any opportunities for more, or are there more, going to be more opportunities for people to go down and testify against that?
I believe so, yes.
Keep us posted on that, because that's something that maybe we should do.
Yeah. And that concludes my report.
If you have any questions. I'm done, I'm done. I tried.
All right, so that brings us to public participation. Anyone wishing to address the Board of Education will be recognized by the Board President. Speakers are requested to identify themselves and their topic. Comments are limited to three minutes.
Good evening, my name is Marielle.
One moment, I'm sorry. She's just, we're just getting ready, one moment, I'm sorry. Should I watch then?
Timer. Clock's good.
Yes, sorry about that thing.
I actually have two items. I listened to, what, 45 minutes to an hour of whatever NV5 is? We know it's a check engine light, but we don't know if it's for a bus, for the HVAC unit, or if it's for the deep fryer that's in the kitchen. What is NV5?
It's a contract we've been working with.
What, is it for finding critical parts within the school buildings in the district?
To do it, they put together a, a spray work to do a comprehensive review of the district facilities for a certain Riverside, Lamuth, Buckeye, and Melridge.
Most businesses already have a, a critical parts list for everything in there, whether it's a building or a front-end loader or what have you. I'm surprised for as long as this school board's been together that there isn't a critical parts list for each one of the buildings already established. The other thing, since I'm running out of time, somebody mentioned that there was a leak near the library in one of the brand-new buildings?
In one of the existing, the Lamuth, which is a, that's a legacy building.
I, I misunderstood, because I thought it was one of the new buildings, and I'd hate to see any of our new buildings go the way of a, after 30 years that the sheriff's, the jail, the Lake County Jail's gone downhill. One last question, with the new schools, are they flexible enough to have additions put on them to accommodate additional students in those districts?
Yes.
Which is also something that the sheriff's department's looking at with the new jails, it can expand if necessary with time.
Yeah, you could put pods on the, on the new schools.
Not, not pods, expand the school.
Yes, yes. That, a pod means expanding the school, adding classrooms like what are there.
Not like the ones what John R. Williams had for several years in the front.
Not temporarily, no.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other public participation? Yes, sir.
Hi, Johnny, here's the Binghamville Township, yes, and Gary, yes, I've been following that bill for a long time. Just by the way, Tom, after, what's a million, what's a billion, 1,000 million, what's a, a trillion, 1,000 billions, you know what's after trillion? Quad trillion, and quintillion, and sextillion, trillion, and so forth, and so, not COVID. It goes on and on, our federal government keeps spending, we'll be up there shortly. Anyhow, for the next two years, you talked about how bad the schools are hurting, what about the taxpayers? The only money the government gets is what's, they only distribute taxpayer dollars, that's all they do. And then federal prints them on money we don't even have, we're approaching 32 trillion here shortly. And the thing about is, just think about that, and the people that are on fixed incomes. And the thing about, I just got a few other things to mention, and I do know about the flat tax, Gary, and so forth and so forth, so. Anyhow, I, I would like to say, I'm asking you, the Biden, you to be good stewards, I've asked the commissioners, the trustees, I've called our state senators down at the State House and also in DC at the Capitol. So, just be better stewards of our taxpayer dollars, the next two years is gonna be very, very tough, very tough. And also, what I'd like to see, also as far as the curriculum, I would like to see, I'm a Riverside alumni, and I, I'd like to see only reading, writing, the three Rs and everything taught at our schools, let's go back to that, you know, I don't want anything else taught there, I, let the parents do the parenting, let's let our kids be kids. We talked to psychologists, they're all saying, a lot of kids, their minds are just being destroyed, you see more and more committing suicide, more and more going to drugs to relax, to feel different. And that's another thing, I heard that they did a canine search here of Riverside and also the parking lot, it was never mentioned, it was like I mentioned the time when the three people were arrested here, and no one had mentioned what was found here, I've heard some things, but that's beside the point. But the thing about, you know, we're supposed to have transparency at our school, so we can oversee it, and, you know, then there's accountability, and I don't see that here. And that really bothers me tremendously. Now, our number one goal, like I tell the sheriff, is to protect our kids. It's very sad we have to have deputies here, very sad. So, there's reasons they're here, and they're not good reasons, and that's sad. Okay, thank you, since, run out of time, thank you.
Any other public participation?
I think you guys are making a mistake with what you're going about here in hiring a superintendent. You don't hire a superintendent, you hire an assistant superintendent. Give you an example, if General Mark Milley retires, President Biden's not gonna go wandering the halls of the Pentagon talking to colonels and brigadier generals and rear admirals, he's gonna elevate one of the other chiefs to the chairman, then that service branch will go look at their four-star generals or fleet admiral, and they're gonna hire that guy, okay? The guy you have here who's your four-star, Mr. Schlick, okay? Everybody wants him to be the superintendent, the teachers' union, the people who work in the administrative staff, the students, I mean, he's your obvious choice, okay? If you wanna hire a new guy, hire somebody to backfill assistant superintendent, put him in charge. He knows what to do, he knows the people, he knows how to keep a rein on your principles and your buildings, which God knows you need to do that, okay? And move forward, you can put a, chalk it up in the win column and move on. Second thing, I wanna give you some perspective on this NV5 report. You got billed for 194 hours and an average cost of 142 bucks an hour, $27,500, and you got a 12-page report that cost you $2,300 a page. Took them five months to do it, so on average, they worked less than one week out of the month, and they were late giving you the report. Their final report, you should note, in your billing... Their final report, you should note in your billing statements that the project estimator spent exactly one hour on the project, okay? That's this page here with all the numbers on it, okay? One hour spent, and it cost you $28,000, all right? To put those numbers in perspective, at $260 a square foot, it would be apparent from their report, it would cost $180,000 to renovate a classroom, 14.7 million to renovate all the classrooms, and the hallways would be $5 million at $260 a square foot. She quotes $360 a square foot for a bus garage that's four, five times the size of the one you already have, and would only cost $100 a square foot or less to build, okay? The last thing is, on your request for proposal document, this ASTME 2018-15, the abstract for that is 22 pages, okay? The full requirements are even more than that, okay? What you're proposing is to expend thousands of hours of time to find out things that are almost self-evident, like the brick needs tuck pointed on the back of the building, okay? We need windows, we need other things. Mr. Arlessic is eminently qualified to advise you on where to spend the money to maintain the school district. Thank you.
Any other public participation? All right, that brings us to consent agenda portion of our meeting. Start with finance and audit.
All right, we have a motion to approve the items listed on the finance and audit consent agendas recommended by the treasurer, is A through O. You have a second?
No second.
I just want to, as always, thank the people who have provided donations for the district. I'm just wanting to thank the public. We have Jenny Cavell, who donated to the National Honor Society, Bogart Rate Insurance Agency, who also donated to the National Honor Society, a substantial donation from the RHS Grid Iron Club for some coaching, additional coaching staff. We have University Hospitals, Lake West Rehab Department, who donated to Riverside Athletics in memory of James Evans, Gary and Hannah Fairbanks, to Riverside Friends Club. We have various withdrawn students who have donated to the nutrition departments, Angel Fund, which actually provides meals for students who may not have Bonzales to have food service. Cerna and Sons, Inc., to Riverside Athletics in memory of James Evans. 1922 Coffee and Brew, donated to Riverside Drama. Subway, to Riverside High School, for some things for the Black and Gold Winners of the Month. Pizza Roto, to Riverside High School, again, for Black and Gold Winners of the Month, and Longos, Joey's, Pescinas, to Riverside High School, also for Black and Gold Winners of the Month. So thank you to those individuals, families, and this is, that's a reason I would leave it. Is there any other discussion on the finance agenda items?
Just a question on Weston Hurd. What is?
Law firm?
It's a new law firm, so we use Walter to do, for many years, the district used them, and some of the attorneys have left. Walter had a deal, and went to Weston Hurd, so we have approved a new PO to that firm. We work with the same attorneys that we work, just they changed first.
They mostly do special.
They have a motion to have them do special. Thank you.
Is there any other discussion on these items? Can we call the roll, Mr. Plankcomb?
Linda Grassi.
Aye.
Scott Fischel.
Aye.
Tom Heck.
Aye.
Jennifer Hurd.
Aye.
Lori Kinsky.
Motion carried. We also have item Q on the finance agenda for Chromebook purchases for EZ Graphics Corp. Corporation, for resolution for approval purchase order, for the purchase of 675 Chromebooks for a total of $174,717. Can I have a second? A second. Is there any discussion on this item?
Just very quickly, so I, my personal opinion, I'm a little bit suspect on Google and, and from a privacy perspective. So I have been reticent to vote in favor of that. I would like to say thank you to Mr. Schlick and Mr. Renwick, Renick? Remwick?
Correct.
And for Mr. Placko, having a conversation with me, they've answered some of my questions. I did go back and look. I'm still investigating, so the reason that this is separated is that I'm going to vote no, but I am trying to do my due diligence to make sure that, that we're doing the best we can. I did find out that of the major options, Chromebooks are the cheapest, apparently by far, so that's something a plus. But, but looking at other aspects, the privacy issues is still, I'm still working through, so that's why I asked to have it separated.
Is there any other discussion on that item?
How, what's the lifespan of a Chromebook?
Six years.
Six? So presumably, we wouldn't be revisiting this for six years, or possibly we could if we wanted to.
Every year.
We go every year, so replacing.
This is two grades, we're two grades.
First grade and seventh grade.
Oh, I see.
So each year, we'll purchase another.
So it's ongoing every year? So it can be revisited and, or, okay.
Do we kind of, over the years, especially if COVID and things have happened, there's persons that are consistent and want forwards, and you're assisting them?
Thank you.
All right, if there's no other discussion, can we call the roll, please?
Scott Fischel.
Aye.
Tom Heck.
Aye.
Jennifer Hurd.
Aye.
Lori Kinsky.
Aye.
Linda Grassi.
Aye.
Motion carried. Bring this to the consent agenda for personnel? Sure, we have a motion to approve the items listed on the personnel consent agendas recommended by the superintendent, items A through E. Can I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion on any of these items, A through E? Can we call the roll, please?
Tom Heck.
Aye.
Jennifer Hurd.
Aye.
Lori Kinsky.
Aye.
Linda Grassi.
Aye.
Scott Fischel.
Aye.
Motion carried.
And I would just like to, John is now a full Riverside team.
Is that effective like now?
July 1st. July 1st.
Just for clarifications for people who may be watching, is that we didn't have insured service for IT services with Kirtland. That agreement's coming to an end, and we were fortunate enough to bring Mr. Renwick on board.
And assistant as well, Mike, who couldn't be here and see.
And so we would say yay for us.
Thank you. Welcome aboard. Thank you.
Hey, that brings us to curriculum and programming.
Motion to approve the items listed on the curriculum and programming consent agenda as recommended by the superintendent, item A. Is there any discussion?
I'll second too.
I'm sorry, is there a second? Thank you, any discussion?
Can you take the roll? Jennifer Hurd.
Aye.
Lori Kinsky.
Aye.
Linda Grassi.
Aye.
Scott Fischel.
Aye.
Aye.
So everyone knows that is the school calendar, if anyone's looking for it. Which is probably posted now. Thank you. Right? You posted it already.
And we'll actually go live at midnight. You might be here to see it.
I was just going to say, I might still drive it. Hope it comes over my phone.
Which it's almost midnight, so we could, we could have a countdown.
Or not, right?
Do you have any popcorn?
I have french fries.
All right, just to keep us moving, buildings and grounds operations.
Like I said, motion to approve the items listed on the buildings and grounds consent agenda, item A, as recommended by the superintendent. Can I have a second, please?
All right.
Whoever you want to call, whoever. Make a unanimous second. Are there any discussions, this is to purchase the clauses which were mentioned earlier in the meeting. Can we call the roll, please?
Lori Kinsky.
Aye.
Linda Grassi.
Aye.
Scott Fischel.
Aye.
Tom Heck.
Aye.
Jennifer Hurd.
Aye.
Motion carried. Board of Education update? That's a no, okay? That brings us to make a motion to adjourn to executive session at 9:59 PM for matters of personnel matters, appointment into employment, discipline, compensation, and negotiations. Can I get a second?
Second.
And can we call the roll, please?
Tom Heck.
Aye.
Scott Fischel.
Aye.
Linda Grassi.
Aye.
Jennifer Hurd.
Aye.
Lori Kinsky.
Aye. Motion carried.